The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. It's like we have all present with the exception of Cindy, but she will be coming. Thank you, everybody, for joining us in this fine December beautiful evening. We'll just move to number four unless anybody has anything else to do or say before Cindy gets here. I don't know if we have anything. None agenda related or that we can talk about, but otherwise we can, we can move if we want.
Are you our scheduled presentation?
They would be, yeah.
They're on ICS.
We're listed under discussion items, so if you want to officially approve the agenda, then we can jump to that.
That's right. I gotta do this thing the right way. So in front of you is the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Don, second by Holly. Any more discussion on the agenda? Any additions? Not signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Now we got discussion items order. Is that right, the way that was? Approval agenda, shouldn't that be above the schedule?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's why. See, I'm linear. I'm being linear today, so I'm just straight right with it.
All right, so I'll jump in. We'll get rolling. We have some guests here tonight. We have Jeff Schultz and Nathan from, and Kent from ICS. We have Dan Miller from, from JLG. We have Matthew Ellers on the way. He called me half hour ago, probably a little bit more, probably an hour ago. He's stuck in traffic in the cities, said he'd be here, but he's gonna be a little bit late, depending on what the roads are like as he got further this way. We've kind of got, we do have the presentation set up. Much of the financials toward the end of it, I guess where we need Matthew, so I think we can jump in with that. But in the past couple of weeks, we took, tried to take, we took the information, summarized it in various forms. I shared some of that back with the board and with, with, with our staff, just where we're at coming out of the last refer, or the referendum. Last week, Jeff and I met for a couple of days and we've met the last two days and all day yesterday and up until about three minutes to five today, putting together, working through the different options and things you brought that we wanted to look at. Today, we had the whole team come together, which has been awesome. Instead of making calls or, you know, Zoom meetings in, we were all sitting around the table and having the team there was great. We were able to make some changes, adjustments, address ideas and determine if they were workable, good ideas or not. And so with that, I'll turn it over, I'll turn it over to Jeff if we're ready to go.
All right, next Dan. Like Dan said, we've had a lot of time and a lot of meetings and I can't say enough about the team. Dan Miller and the JLG, it's not just Dan from JLG that's been working with us. He's got about four different architects running different space analysis. We literally laid out what a new elementary school would look like to try to look how we can shave space. And then we took that time to spend with your principals and Dan to make sure we're, we're trying to use the space and reduce it, but not reduce it to where we all regret if we are building a new school, that we regret that we built it too small. Your principals have been huge. They've, they've worked alongside us to, to make sure we're right sizing space. We're looking at ways to share space to make it more effective, looking at ways to use our corridors for breakout learning spaces.
So that, Cindy, get a chair.
I'm going to go major to the front, so I'm just gonna take a little rest.
All right, get her one of those comfy ones and just push her right up here.
You wonder what sound like a duck. You must need oil on one of your wheels.
Yeah, the noise that was her squeaking. Yeah, grab that one.
Sorry, I didn't.
We might need more handicap accessibility.
That's a good place to start.
Looking Wheeler, look at that.
Yeah, it's here now. What is that noise?
It was a goose coming in.
Goose coming in the decoys.
Here comes Cindy.
We're wheeling over.
Just have Ronald lead it.
He already did. Or just Jeff is just. All right.
All right. Cindy, we're glad you're here with us. And then, so the architectural team where I really rolled up their sleeves, your principals, my, my team, including Steve Schulke from CMTA on the civil side. We had mechanical folks looking at sizing of fire pumps and fire protection stuff to Nathan from our construction team. Spent time talking to some contractors and see if there's ways to, to trim the budget on concrete and asphalt and costs that are in our budget and, but yet make sure we've got ourselves covered, right? So you don't even have any idea how much time and effort's been put into the work and your principals have been so open minded to looking at space reductions. When we get into the building layout, it helps you because you can start to see what it would look like and then you can see how we're using spaces more effectively. We also looked at ways to save space such as reducing the mechanical space. We can put some units on the roof, but let's make sure we build a penthouse on the roof. So units last longer and they don't get, you know, ruined earlier. We, we looked at, we'll get into some of the specific details. Can we share a special ed space between this program and that program? Little bit of anxiety, but maybe we can do that, right? And so different things like that have been worked through. I'm gonna go into, our meeting review from our last meeting with you folks kind of helped guiding us. I don't know, this has helped us a lot because your little thumb exercise really kind of guided us on things to, to focus our time and efforts on. We dropped the second ballot in the community, the community space and the community wellness center, right? And we were kind of a little mixed on that, right? And I believe it was Cindy that said, can we have an option to add the, the gym part of that? And then maybe donors would pick up the rest of the tab. So we're gonna have an option for you to think about on that. Eliminate the transportation center. You're split on that, right? We spent time and Dan, thanks for taking your time and your tech, your transportation director came, rolled up her sleeves, the architectural team has brought different bus designs. We'd looked at every creative idea that we can. I'll talk through some of those with you. And we landed on a smaller, more cost effective bus garage as an option for you to consider. So we'll talk about that. Reduce square foot. You guys were all thumbs up. Let's do what we can to trim this thing and, and we've done that. And you're gonna see some different options on that. We also talked about, we look at moving sixth grade to the high school. We're gonna talk about that. I can speak on behalf of your administrative team like it's not just that simple. What's this building like? Where would we put sixth graders? How do we keep six, seventh and eighth graders together for a middle school model, right? What are parents gonna feel like when we move to sixth grade? How are they gonna feel, right? We're gonna talk a little bit about that tonight with your administrative team about, it might be a simple decision to reduce the square footage, but we might want to get some feedback before we make that decision, right? Now, we, we then looked at longer bond timeframe. And again, I, we remissly can talk about the work that Matthew Hammer and Beth Downs and their team at Ellers have done in the last two, three weeks. Looking at bond schedule, looking at interest rates, looking at different options of increasing time and debt, looking at the past net tax capacity growth of the school district to see if we bump up a little on growth, a growth line item. And he could talk about that when we get to his section as well. But some really nice things to be looking at from the board as an option, 20 year option, 25 year option to build new. And what does that do to bring taxpayer costs down? And then working on a plan B in January and February. So if something doesn't pass, what are we gonna do, right? And so we'll get into that in more detail after we have a plan to bring forward. Okay, good recap? Okay, your bus garages. So your bus garages are, they're just not good, right? You guys know this, this, I'll recap. There's the square footages that you have today. You've got the 1950 building, right? And the 1950 building and, you know, we looked at what can we do to repair or renovate these? Well, the moment we start looking to add on or do a renovation of these buildings, now we have to bring them up to code. Their grandfathered in is where they sit today. Bringing them up to code means sprinklers, means proper ventilation, means making sure there's exhaust CO2 monitors and CO monitors to cover monoxide. So if a door is shut and a bus is running, your bus drivers don't get, you know, die of asphyxiation. There's reasons, all the codes and rules exist. You have problems with water drainage, no place for the water to go when the snow comes in on buses and it melts and your employees are working in deep water. You tried to do presentations there. You just, there's no place to do it. There's some real challenges. Your office areas aren't handicap accessible. You have a dirt floor, gravel floor in the, in the pole barn section of the building. You have some real challenges, right?
Jeff, if I, if I understand right, the other problem is is that buses don't even fit in the garage.
The buses are much bigger and longer than they were back in the day when your bus buildings were built in 50s and the 80s.
And I feel like I remember the adding an extra bathroom because we are short a bathroom is crazy expensive.
It's really expensive. And, and again, yeah, and it starts adding code issues, right? Now you're getting to handicap accessibility and, and you have men and women using the same bathroom right now. Not that they can't, but you, you, there's just a lot of challenges, right? One of the things we were, we, we, we were looking at trying to think of everything we can. People think that you could just build a big old pole barn and just put all the buses in. Well, you can't. And we went back and forth with the code professionals and our architectural design and our construction team and looked at all the buses, garages that we built and you just can't. You, you've got to follow the codes and laws of a bus garage, right? So you can't just build a pole barn. And, and so it drives the cost up. It just does. We looked at, could we eliminate, get rid of the 1950 and what if we moved the existing pole barn and go put a slab down? And pick, had a contractor bring it down and move it? Do we then need to bring it to code? Yes. And we met with your fire chief today to verify some of these things and talk about the code standards and, and you what? You'd need to sprinkle that building, right? Just because it's grandfathered in where it's at, it's not if we move it. So we're trying to look at some real thrifty things to try to come up with a, an option other than building new or doing nothing, right? And then what can we do if we build new and we trim back? And so you'll, I'm, I'm gonna talk about what you have. We also looked at the number of fleet buses you have, right? You have buses that are pretty old. Your staff keeps a few, several buses are backup buses. Last year at one point, you had six buses that went down. But you had the backup buses, which are the oldest ones that you are able to use while your staff is fixing the buses that are down, right? And there's other districts that are similar. And we looked at a similar sized district, Staples Motley. How many buses do they have? What's their geographical territory? How many bus routes do they have? Very similar to you, very similar number of buses, right? So we really kind of really gone hard at the bus thing. We then looked at, if you look at where we put the bus garage, right? Again, this is, this is a great buildable site for our school. So it was up here, as you know, right? Two really good buildable sites. And we want to make sure we have enough room on the property for a future high school down the road whenever that comes, right? And we'd have it here, we'd have it here, right? We put the bus garage up here and we connected a second route access that could come into the property and connect out. Well, this is expensive because we've got to build the road and access, right? We also know that there's some neighbors up in this area that just assume us not access the school down this direction, right? So do we need this, this additional access by code? We're hearing the answer is no, right? Would it be nice to have that connection? Yes, but we might get more support by not having that connection. And could that connection happen later at some time or if a high school came down the road or you felt like it was a need down the, yeah. So one of the things we looked at with the civil team was taking this out. But we didn't want to take it out without meeting with the fire mark, the fire chief here, because we want to make sure the fire chief is comfortable with access to the school. So we did do that. So yeah, so this is one of the things we look to eliminate. And we, we bet, we've got the green light to pull this out and eliminate. I think it's gonna add some support in the neighborhood up there. Dan, any comments on that?
Yeah, I've had a number of people concerned about cars coming down that street if we, if we improved it, but didn't improve it to all traffic. Some of you probably seen or heard the same. But if, you know, that road turns into basically a fuel road or just, well, kind of where it goes to the east, they're out to 12. So if we don't have, if we don't improve that and we don't use that, we don't have our bus garage there, we feel like we can answer that question. No, we're not gonna have an access point coming in there. We're not gonna be improving the road along the way to get into the school. So we'll kind of address, not only will it save us some money by not running infrastructure up there at this point, but it'll also maybe answer some of those questions people have that lived off of, off of that cut across. Would we be able to access that in an emergency type of situation? We talked about that today. Fire chief said it would be great to have it. They would, he didn't think there'd be any mandated reason to do so. But maybe it would be for gravel road or road. So if there was an emergency need to get a, maybe something happened on the other road and we need to get in from the backside or out. Or just any, anything even law enforcement access.
Ambulance would be faster coming that side way than going around too, so.
Okay, just keep that in mind as I. So it'd be more of a.
Emergency access.
Emergency access. Not an access or not an entry or exit point. But it would be something that we, we would have, yeah. So we did talk about that some today. And if it's minimal use, I don't know how much, you know, also grab class five or maybe build, have to build a road up a little bit. But there's a path or a trail and a field road approach once you get to the end of that.
That exists today.
Yeah, sure.
So where would the bus garage go?
Okay, next slide. Look at that. So what we're trying to do, can we keep it on and close to the property, but not take away from where we say 20 years from now, if they're looking at a high school and they go, why did you put the bus garage there? Oh, I wish they wouldn't have done that, right? So we're trying to look at where, do we put it here? We had another example, putting it here, but it would impact your view down where maybe your fields are down here down the road. We're looking at where we might put it and having the civil guy take a look at it, the architects. Well, but we're confident we could put it somewhere up in this location, right? They don't want it down here because we don't want it in the way with traffic coming in and parents and, right? And if you see our design as we laid it out before, parents would come into the property. They would drive along this. They'd come to the parent pickup and drop off loop and then back out of the school, right? Buses would be on this side of the property, right? So your bus pickup and drop offs over here can loop around and out, right? So trying to keep the separation between. Then we also have the ring road. And the reason we have a ring road is for fire reasons, right? So the fire department can get access in and out to the school. It could even be smaller at this time because we don't have a high school, right? But it could be right around here, but just trying to have that ring road so that there'd be always be fire access and, and be part of the design when you get to the school. Any questions or comments on that?
Obviously, yeah, like Little Falls has one of those and it's like chained off.
Yeah.
All the time. But if, if there was an emergency, obviously, fire department, they would cut right around the.
That's right. Yep, very similar to that.
Whatever, anything, what we're trying to do is not only maybe save some square footage in the building, but kind of minimize our footprint, if you will, because the more compact we can make that, the less infrastructure we have to build so that the ring road or the loop, you know, if we bring, we don't have to go that far. We had drawn it that far. So if you're ready to be sure the bus garage is gonna be up there anyway. But really that could slide down for the time being and maybe be right there right there just running across.
Could be up here, could be over here, right? There's lots of locations for us to put it. But we want to keep it away from the, you know, parents, right? So.
We also, we also looked at maybe attaching the bus garage right to the school so we could share facilities. Again, we're running all sorts of code things and challenges with doing that. So we, we, we decided to move away from that plan. There's several different options we looked at, but this is kind of where we, we landed at this point.
Yeah, we, we, we probably have about 50 options that we've been going back and forth and every time it's like, that's just doesn't make sense, right? If we connected the school, we'd, we'd save some money. But then we have diesel fumes coming into school or you get the safe, you have to bring, put firewalls between the spaces. We don't want to compromise safety for kids and, and so yeah, there's been a lot of options. Could the tech ed class build them? No, they can't. Bus garages are too high. There's safety issues. We can't have kids doing that. Just can't, right? We've got cranes and stuff like that, right? So we've really scrubbed options. So here's where we're at. This is where we landed on. This is not an architecture drawing. This is Jeff Schultz taking drawings from different school bus garages, cutting and pasting them together. Dan will make it much nicer when, when they get some time to really get into this. But Dan and I spent a lot of time with the transportation director and said, we need, we need a, a new plan for the board for the bus garage. It's not 26,000 square feet. It's not housing all of your buses. We need to hire the bus, we need to house the buses that are, the, the ones that are on the routes now, the ones that we need to take care of the most. And we can use our backup buses. It can be stored back in the old pole barn, right? And when we need them, because we have that access, we can use it, right? So then we need to back it down. We're not sized for 27 buses anymore, right? We're sized for up to 19 buses, which are the fleet that you have in service today. We also have, this area here is cold. We're not heating it. We're not insulating it. We took that out and, but then they need enough heated area because they are gonna be working on more than two buses at a time. And you can't just count on the two work bays. These are two work bays on the, on the. And then this is a wash bay. So you can clean and wash a bus, right? We have a compact office space. We took the office space of the Park Rapids bus garage. And it was just exactly what your staff was feeling. I mean, not too big, not too small. We need to have a meeting space. We need to have the bathroom. We need an oil room. We need a parts room. We need to have a right office. And anyway, they, they're like, that's perfect. We pop that in. That's the right size. We need a spot for your vans. So we have, we'll have a way to park your vans. It'd be a door coming in on the side. And then we'd have two by two buses. So they back them in, two by two. Again, heat is basing green. We have an outside pad for the extra buses that we, you know, if they need a few there on the property that they can get to, they, they'd have a spot they can park them with. They're outside. They're just outside, right? So they, they were, again, again, your staff is doing everything. They're all, everybody's rolling up their sleeves to be a part of the team to help and to make, and to take compromises, right? I, I gotta tell you, we, we started the meeting with her and it was this plea about you need to know how important our bus garages are and how bad they are. And it's like, we've, we got you, right? The board gets, got you. But the community, they voted it down. The community voted it down. We're looking for a conference. At the end of the day, bus garage might not even be in the referendum. The school board's got to really wrestle with, they need a new elementary school, right? And we recognize the bus garages are, are a challenge. So I don't know. Anything else to add, Dan?
Pretty much summed it up.
All right. This brought a way down. We're, we're over $2 million in reduction in the cost of the bus garage. It's a huge reduction. Has it reduced enough to be supportive? We don't know, right? But this is an option on the table for you as a board. Your 20,000, 6,000 square foot option or your 14,000 foot, square foot option? Helpful?
Yeah.
Questions?
What really changed like the number of bays? How did, how did that shrink from the 26,000? We had 20, there are 20.
We had 26,000. So we had, we're now using this to put your other buses in that don't fit. Because you have 27 buses and you have 19 that'll fit in that space. And that 19 fit in there, that includes a bus in the bus, in the wash bay, two buses in the maintenance bays, right? See what I mean?
Yes, 16 routes.
Oh, you have 16 routes.
Every active route bus is parked at the elementary to start the day and that's where it ends up. But your spares would all be, you could either park them outside or if you want to store them during the summer or whatever, you put them in the existing storage garage.
Really trying to.
That's, I mean, that was 10,000 square feet. That was, that was the biggest change.
We're getting out of this building, right?
Right.
And we could build a smaller one. We are looking, can we build a smaller one in a maintenance bay and a smaller one? And then fill your 7,200 square foot pole barn to, to the max. And they're like, well, our staff's gonna go two different places. It doesn't make sense, right? And it doesn't, and it doesn't. We're like, well, we're, we're giving you options, but they might not be good ones, right? But we are looking at all those types of things. Other questions? All right. Again, we, as you are all well aware, we spent time working with the city on making sure we had budget from the city and the city engineers. And then our civil engineers also worked together with them on, on budgets. And we have in writing the documents of the cost to run utilities to your property, right? So you all know this. We originally looked at a green line. They like us to do the blue line. They budgeted out the blue line, which is a loop there and back. Budgeted out the yellow line that brings it to where our school property and site is today, right? They budgeted out a future water tower if development occurred on your other part of your land, if, if it's needed. The water tower's not in the budget. It's not needed. It has been verified a second time, thanks Nathan. Working with the mechanical contractor engineers that we'd have a fire pump and we don't need a water tower. So that's confirmed again, what's confirmed last time, but I want to reiterate that. And we have not reduced this budget. We kept the city's budget from the city engineer to us whole, right? So there's been zero reduction in those budgets, okay? This is, our spreadsheet rolls up the cost per square foot of construction and rolls it up into these, into our different spreadsheets. And then this kind of summarizes the cost, right? And so I want to walk through this one time, but in the future slides of the different building layouts, you're just gonna see the total dollar amount, right? But I want you to see where it comes from and then you can see as board members from a transparency perspective, where, where did we trim? Where did we not? What's the same, right? So where, one area we trimmed, we trimmed was in the school and the square footage of the school. And you'll remember before we had a 94,000 square foot school based on five different renovations and, and analysis by your administrative team on square footage needs, right? They have really looked at what we can do to trim that back, okay? So this first line item, every one of these is different and it's come down a lot, okay? Site, earthwork, paving, utilities. This is our civil engineers budgets on the roads and infrastructure in your property. You know, beefing up 340th Avenue, putting the culvert wider to make sure it's wide enough for buses, making sure it's paved. You guys all know this, but some people have said you didn't have it in your budget. It's in your budget. It's been refined. It's been lowered. Why has it been lowered? It's lowered because now we don't have that road going up to the site, right? Up for the bus garage and the, and the road connected for the second entrance. So this has come down quite a bit. 1. something million, Nathan, roughly? About a minute, over a million? 1.1 million. So that number has been reduced, okay? Site lighting, still the same. We kept the site lighting budget the same. We kept the elementary playground and, and one playfield. It's, it's the same. The city of Aitkins utilities to the property is the same. Furniture fixtures and equipment, right? That's furniture, clocks, systems are, right throughout the building. Kept it the same. Could it be reduced a little bit for a fifth, if, if we move the sixth grade out? We, we probably could, but we didn't, right? So as board members, you get a sense of where we, where we got. Questions on this? So as board members, you get a sense of where we where we got. Questions on this?
Right, so the proposed bonding bill that didn't didn't advance in the legislature, that would have. Targeted the city making cost?
Yes.
That would help, yeah.
Yeah, yep, and and indications are, and we met with the city leaders today, uh but. We try again. I don't I don't know if we'll be successful, but if we can save three point eight million dollars by the state bonding to pay for this for us. That'd be great, right? But again, that money would go to the city. Cities can bond for bonding bills. Schools really don't, right?
So say they put that up and we go for this, then it goes to the city. Does that mean the city has to use it for us? Or can they then turn around and be like, well, we got bonded and we can use this, because I know they have other major sewer issues, so.
It would be, it would be specified under the statute right now, under the law that was submitted. That it would be for bringing infrastructure to the school's new property and site.
Okay.
It's a great question.
Like you said, this is looking at the pre a pre K five. That's one of the reasons that the square footage went down. We took basically three classrooms and. Made some uh shrunk a few other areas, reduce some space in a few other areas, because we have one less grade there.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. This is the lowest option that we have for you. And you can see our math. We break it down and we total it up, but then we have to add construction inflation, right? Again, if it would have passed in November, costs are, when we go out to bid a year from now, would have been. Less than they will be six months later, right? So your construction inflation is average about four percent a year. So by having a six month delay, we put two percent on top of all the the numbers, right? It's one of the hard things for, you guys get this, but hopefully the general public understands. You lost five million dollars in a grant from the I triple R B. And we add two percent construction inflation. We're starting out seven million dollars in the hole, right? Just from the beginning of starting this out, or even more, right? So yes, we're trimming, we're trimming, but we also lost five million and we. And we've got construction inflation. Every day we keep missing the market. It's getting more expensive, right? So uh and then the bus garage, a new plan for the bus garage now at fourteen thousand square feet versus twenty-six. Pretty simple math, but it's it's down well over two million dollars, yeah? Alright, so now we, you'll remember our space programs, a complicated spreadsheet, X amount of classrooms. Measuring the classrooms for M D E guidelines, using rules of thumb from the industry and and the architectural experts. How many bathrooms are we gonna need? How many classrooms and and your staff looking at how many special ed rooms we need and and so on, right? And we took that and the architectural team through Thanksgiving. Put it on a piece of paper. What would it look like? Boxed it out and look for shared spaces and look for areas to save. And I'll give uh an example of an area to save. Instead of building breakout collaborative learning spaces, we're using corridor space. Right? For collaborative breakout spaces, for our kindergarten areas and and our classroom areas and our second floor classroom areas, right? That gives you an example of where we're saving.
So then we're not gonna be right back at where we are now, where these kids are out there in the hallways learning their title stuff, right?
You're correct. No, we won't be like that at all. No.
When you show me that little corridor over there, I'm like, that's basically what we're doing now.
It'll be, it'll be much, much better. And you'll remember, we had examples and pictures of other schools from before with collaborative breakout areas. Some of your staff went up to Grand Rapids Elementary and saw that those are the types of spaces that are included in your plan here. Okay? Alright. You also, the gym that we had before, you'll remember the gym in the plan was eighty-five hundred square feet. Size the two middle school courts, but big enough for a full-size court, right? And then you had the pickleball court, community court, that also could be used after school as well. So we have it in a different color to be an alternate for you. It'd be about uh two point five million dollars as an alternate. Could it be a second, third ballot question? Don't know. That'll be decisions for the board. But that was one of the things that you asked at the last meeting to make sure we have that as an option. Could community donors build the community center or put money in for a walking track was some of the things that you had brought forward. So I'm gonna turn it over to uh Dan Miller, the architect, together with Andy Dokken. To walk through the spaces. They're gonna walk you through your school. Um I don't know. Take it away, guys.
So what he did here, we broke it up the next four slides. They they zoomed in on the building and kind of just broke it up into the four sections. Uh you can see one of the, I guess, reductions. Uh we keep our increased gym space, but we would still double that first half of the gym space as as a cafeteria space. Uh it would have a divider in there, so you'd still have the alternate space on the right. We have increased storage above the kitchen, um so the kitchen's actually bigger as well. Um there's some receiving storage. Right now, we have zero at the current elementary, uh but that's kind of uh shipping and receiving, if you will. Boilers, you can see are up top. Um there's table storage, so our cafeteria tables would be stored right by the kitchen. Just under the kitchen, A C, um a lot of kind of. Our infrastructure for the school is housed right in that kind of little area of the building. There is a little concession stand they have built in right there. You know, whether we need that or not, but if we're having junior high tournaments there, it's kind of a nice, a nice option, and so it's a it's a relatively small space. Then we go down, you can see the admin office there. That's gonna be broke up into a couple offices, um probably a small conference room. Principal's office, main office. With our secure entry, of course, you know, coming in right there where they have to come into the 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 main office to enter the building. One thing you can see there, flex classroom. We talked about keeping a flexible classroom, just in case we do have a big class, such as our third grade with eighty-six kids. Um we do have that option, um just as far as, you know, if we don't have a big class, it's just, it's a nice space to have. Um whether we're doing, have artists and residents come in, um after school activities, vice versa, kind of like our current old art room, if you will. You know, we're using that as a flex classroom right now. It's a, it's used very regularly, so. Um and then we move up, uh you can see on the left lower side there, um kind of our sped suite sped wing. Um so we have all of our classrooms. Um you know, this is one area in our student population that we're not seeing a decrease in. We're actually probably seeing a little bit of an increase um in our special ed population. You guys know this, but we have fantastic programming, and I think that we actually have people that come to our district because of our fantastic program. I would say that special ed's becoming a little more specialized because of the disabilities that, you know. We're starting to diagnose and just seeing differences from from paths. Um but our sped suite sped wing is there, and I'll be honest, from an administrative standpoint, I mean, I spend a lot, spend a lot of time supporting. This area, so it's nice in relative location to the front of the building, um just as far as accessibility accessibility goes. Um it's great.
I do have a question about this thought before you move on.
Yeah.
Cafeteria.
Yeah.
Will that be able to be, will this be a common cafeteria between both buildings once we have both buildings? Or are we looking at two cafeterias?
So we actually talked about a couple options here in the design process, I think, once we move further. And this is where some of the spacing could switch. You know, this is really. One thing that we talked a lot about in the last week or so, um you know. Dan, Jeff, myself and Lisa, is that that was part of it, is that we would have one common kitchen. We may not share a cafeteria space just because of the age differences in kids, but you know. These are just ideas, because it's just really about the square footage, right? So that's what we have to keep in mind. And so this exact layout may not, you know, be a specific. Yeah, it's super general, it's a what, ten thousand foot view or whatever you want to say, right?
I just know that's gonna be a question. I don't want to have to say to the community, actually, we're gonna still build you two kitchens and two cafeterias, you know? Because they'll be like, isn't that part of what's supposed to?
Well, and looking at this, and and not gonna challenge the design, but.
Yep.
Maybe the kitchen slides up and the gym storage flex.
Yeah, come down.
Yeah, maybe it goes up here.
For the elementary and then whatever future.
And like I said, this was just an office work, but yes, that is, that is been in the discussion.
Someone else is gonna look at that and go, how are you gonna access that cafeteria with a second building? So that's why I wanted to ask that question.
And and you need to know Lisa's all over that too. Lisa's asked that question every time too, right?
To the overall building.
Yeah.
You'll notice that the kitchen and the gym space is being doubling as a cafeteria. It is at the northern end of the plan. Which is where we anticipate a future high school would go. And there were, there were little, we were looking for places to shave square footage. One of the things that we did in the kitchen was originally programmed at three thousand square feet. Um really, for an elementary this size, we could make it work in that two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet. But we were anticipating originally, it was like, well, let's build in some capacity for that future high school option. Now, if you, now if you go back to the next plan there, Jeff, you see where we have gym storage, that area there?
Extend up.
Basically, what we did is we said, let's shrink the kitchen now, but let's know that we're, if twenty years from now, if the high school happens. We're blowing out that gym storage. We're growing it north and we'll we'll grow it more later. And so we kind of made some of those judgment calls on where we could save, so.
Okay.
Cindy has a question.
Yeah, I can't quite see there. I know um is the boiler area at the top there?
Yeah.
Cause I know that um, okay, cause I know like in our current construction, that's been an issue, right? Because wherever your boiler rooms are, we're not remodeling those, right?
We're not ready.
So I want to be like mindful of that, because that's been one of our biggest challenges with doing any sort of renovations at either of our current locations. Um the other issue is that I want to make sure that with the special ed area that we're also mindful of. Like sensory issues, so knowing that this is gonna be a high-traffic area. And we take into consideration how to like have noise reduction, um physical activity reduction, you know, that sort of thing. I think that was a big piece that we appreciated when we, when we had the water damage here and then the remodeling. That we were able to put the special ed in an area where there was minimal um. Sort of overstimulus sensory issues to sort of bother some.
Good, good question, Cindy. If Jeff, if you go back again, I'll just fill in some of the blanks on some of those questions, but I got a point and wave. So just talking to the sped issue right here, one of the things that we're doing is we're trying to group, create a suite. So so they're all together. They get, staff can support each other from one space to the next. And then also this space here labeled sped suite, that's really kind of like a vestibule or a common area that you go in off the hall. And then from there, you go into the various spaces. So really, you're not, you wouldn't necessarily have to be accessing all this space here. You come into this space, go the directions you need to go. Or pass through to rooms. So you've got, you've got that extra layer there. That's one thing that we're we're looking into. The other thing um in regards to the boiler and such, and now here's where. Short guys like me, it really doesn't work. I can't get my finger up there high, but at the top of the plan. You can see the the same concept that we're talking about with expanding the kitchen and then the future. High school cafeteria gymnasiums, they all just kind of, we'd anticipated they would just continue to go north. Same idea with mechanical boiler receiving, that sort of thing. If you'll notice, if you go back a slide, Jeff. Um no, uh go back to the current plan. We left that area open, so we're thinking that you've got receiving, delivery coming in from the west. High school goes to the north, and then that way, that, there would probably just be a. A loading area back there, mechanical area, that that would just grow with the high school too. So we were trying to anticipate some of those ideas of where could things grow? Not that we have to figure it out today, but we need to leave a path forward so we don't build a dead end, so. Sorry, Andy, I. No, you're right. You're right. And I think another thing too, that's kind of a hidden factor is like with the sped suite kind of in the middle, it's centrally located. So it's accessible to all the grade levels. Um you know, right now, we're kind of on one end of the building, so it's a challenge. But, Don.
I'm I'm. I guess I have some concerns about housing the cafeteria in the gym.
Yeah.
Because, I don't know if anybody noticed, but it gets really darn cold out. And what happens when kids can't go outside for recess? I know that right now, you know, kids are, they go in by grade level to eat lunch. It's not the whole school down there at once, so you know, what happens with kids when. They can't go outside, they're gonna hang out in the gym.
One, right now, we have zero alternative space.
Uh yeah.
You know, and so actually, we were talking about that yesterday, Dan, Jeff, Lisa and I, um you know, we could. I mean, this is a lot bigger space than our current space. Could you almost put another divider in that cafeteria gym space and have half of that as just kind of a. You know, those were discussions that we had as well, because that's one point that I brought up, is that I would like to have that extra. Flex space, activity space for kids when there's, you know. In the recess in January for two weeks when you don't get to go outside. But yeah, it's definitely been part of the conversation.
We we also have another option that we're about to show you, and so Don, we call it the Don option. Okay?
Hey, I'm all about recess, okay?
This addresses it where the cafeteria commons area, outside the gym space, but it adds more square footage, right? But we try to also use corridor space, so we're not adding a full additional twenty-eight hundred square feet. We're taking advantage of the corridor space. Right? We might have to move some tables every day as kids come into the school and go out of the school, but we do that already today. So anyway, Don, you're you're jumping ahead on us.
Sorry.
So what, yeah, and so what?
But I like that, and I like that for a number of different reasons.
And so what Jeff did, like like I said, this is our smallest version, um you know, and you can see it doesn't have that cafeteria commons here. So we have three options that we're just doing as kind of a zoom-in view right now, and then he's gonna run through the other two options coming up.
Sure.
So does this still include like preschool and then space for the after-school program?
Yep, yep, and we'll get in there zooming. So next slide, Jeff, yeah. So you can see there, um and you know, like Dan just can't, no, go?
Well, just there's the divide. If you look at the divided line there on the, between the two gyms. So you can split them, so cafeteria would be on one side. You would have one gym available all the time. Is that correct?
Yep.
And right now, we're running, you know, we're running pre K six lunch in about. Probably seventy-five minutes. Uh we're getting all the grade levels through right now, um so it's pretty, it's pretty efficient. So uh you can see here, like Dan brought up, um we looked at kind of focusing in in uh suites, if you will. Um so our kindergarten pre K and first uh just well kindergarten pre K um are down on this wing. Um and they have kind of some open space as well, um along with the the flex class, and then there's a uh for like kids club. Um there's a room or a space there for that as well.
So do these rooms have height-appropriate sink?
All that would be, yeah.
Will they have their own bathrooms?
And right now, our spaces are roughly, you know, six hundred and fifty, seven hundred square feet in our, in our smaller classrooms. I mean, you can see up here, um they're eleven hundred to twelve hundred and fifty square feet for our younger learners, so.
And you shook your head yes, that they have bathrooms in the classrooms?
And that's that's square footage to meet the M D standards, guidelines, and it bathrooms in the rooms too. Which is, we hear that that's really common, we then, from our early learners and teachers, that's that's a, that's a need and want.
Yeah, one one kindergartner's gotta go to the bathroom and you gotta bring the whole class, right? Because you're trying to supervise your kids and that just doesn't work, right? It's really a need in in elementary, pre K and K K rooms.
Um so then you can see, we kind of covered this area already here, um but there's music and uh STEM are up top. Um with the media center, um you know, there is media center, a lot of discussion there. Um we'd like to keep a uh open space, flex space, G space, if you will. Lot of discussion on the square footage on media centers um right now, and so that's, I think, up for continued discussion. But, you know, that's probably for another day. Um then you can see, so the one on the right is the bottom floor, um so that is our first and second grade wing, if you will. And then the rooms up just on the left side of the the right diagram is our title spaces. So there's nice little uh title rooms, individual title rooms for that instruction. So that kind of goes to what Holly was asking about. Um they will have individual breakout spaces. Um for our title and support staff to have. Um, instead of sitting in the hallway and working with kids where it's a constant distraction. And then we also have our speech rooms there, a couple of little rooms, yeah. And then a reset room like we kind of our current B S R room, um, but just a behavior reset room. Um, there is a sensory room too in the sped wing, uh, make sure to have that. Um, but the nice thing with having a separate sensory room is that all of our sped classes can access it. You know, right now in our current setting, we have a great sensory room, but it's in the middle of one of our classrooms. So if kids wanna come in, it just kinda creates a, a little bit of a distraction, but kids. Pretty much tune that out too, but it's nice to have that as a separate space.
Where's the nurse's office?
Admin.
Admin, okay.
Yeah, the admin.
I wondered, cause it's not registered, so I figured.
Yeah, since that admin's just a big general space right now and it'll be broke up into. Your typical office, admin type of.
And what about counseling?
Yeah, and so we have, we have, uh, I think we have four counseling offices in here, we were talking about, I guess, three or four. Um.
That would include spaces for no learned binds.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that was, I guess, my real.
So three to four spaces for mental health, basically, social workers, uh, counselors, whatever we wanna say. I, I, I would advocate for four, um, but those are in there as well and within the little rooms. Um, and then on the diagram on the left, we have uh our third, fourth and fifth grade. And so our older grade levels are together, um, same thing. There'll be some flex furniture and now it's learning commons, kinda just. A general space that, as you know, those older kids use a little bit more efficiently than our younger kids do. Um, but that's efficient too because it's two levels and so. You're really efficient with your square footage usage.
Having it, I mean, two levels allows us to keep our site compact, right? Allows for more room in the future for high school down the road, those types of things too, right?
Well, and it keeps your older kids a little separated from your little kids, which parents sometimes appreciate. That they're not gonna have a fifth grader bumping around their kindergartner.
Well, and that's the cool thing is our pre K and K are together on the one wing, you know.
What about, I'm assuming there's an elevator in there somewhere?
Yep.
It'll be on the left side, there you go.
Right there's your elevator.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
That X.
And all these bathrooms are gonna be handicap accessible, right?
Yep.
Are they the, are they the new ones where you can see from, like the staff can watch from the front?
Single stall, single stall bathrooms, right, uh, gender neutral, right? Again, you, you think about it, but you raise your kids not to be. You know, go be private, go to the bathroom by yourself and then we send them to elementary schools like we have. Ripple side, where it's kinda gang bathrooms. And uh, you know, that's, that's not what we teach our kids, right? Be private. And so, schools are moving towards private stall bathrooms.
Well, we're the only country in the world that doesn't have doors all the way to the bottom of our public bathrooms.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we're also seeing just behavior issues of, you got, okay, you lined up all your first graders, you're taking them to the bathroom break. And all the little boys are in there and they're horsing around with the flush toilets and the teacher standing outside saying, okay, you get back out here in the next thirty seconds or I'm coming in there doggone. You know, they don't, but it just eliminates all those behavioral issues too. So from a operational standpoint, regardless of privacy issue, it just, it makes things go smoother for.
Probably eliminates a lot of work for the, for the custodial staff.
Yeah, well, where else do little boys use journals? Nowhere. So you can imagine how fun the boys have.
Yeah.
Elementary problems.
If we decide to keep sixth grade, where would sixth grade go if we decide to keep it?
So we're gonna get into that up next, yeah.
Coming up, John. How's it going? Jen's plan.
I get the, I get to get to have the cafeteria, you get sixth grade, Jen. I think I got a better end of the deal.
And so this one just jumps up to the seventy-nine thousand square feet. So it's two thousand more, right?
Yep, it adds some square footage for the cat, the commons, right?
Do you know what I like about that though, is that when we have. Um, those elementary basketball tournaments. And there is limited space in the gymnasium for families to sit to watch basketball games. There's no place for them. In the school, if they're, if, if we were using the gym for the cafeteria, there's no place for them. And so with this commons area. They could be out there while they're waiting for their next game. And although some people would think that there would be no need for concessions in an elementary school, there really is. Because when you spend a day at a school for a tournament on Saturday and there's no food there, it's a royal pain.
Candy machines don't last long.
No, no, and so, you know, I, I just, I think that's for the extra. Few thousand feet, it's. A better option.
Well, it's really about a six hundred thousand dollar difference, um, between the first two options. The one other thing that we didn't mention, um, is that we'd be able to lock off the rest of the building. Um, like on weekends or after school. And so we could put doors, kind of if you see the first A S D classroom are right there, like you can seal those off so, you know, the rest of our building isn't accessible.
Yeah, you can really seal them off. So you, so you got your community use, right, with bathrooms, commons area, gym, gym usage. Concession and that's it, table storage and you can put your, your other set of doors wherever.
And what was the price tag on this one?
Fifty-one eight.
Lunchtime gets so loud too in the cafeteria. I can't imagine having lunch. And Ava trying to have gym right next door even with a divider.
And it'll be better because it's gonna be higher ceiling, I mean, our. Current setup is just so not conducive to sound.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a solid wall and you can't, you can't hear between the two gyms. We got them in Grand Rapids and.
Yeah, so this one, it's not a divider, it's actually like, uh, it's like the folding walls, like it's, it's, it's a, yeah.
Here I was envisioning a curtain.
Me too.
Yeah, it's not, not just a curtain.
Well, I would think a curtain would be cheaper.
Well, it is.
A lot cheaper.
And a lot noisier.
Yeah.
I'm curious about this cost trade-offs, having a second story on, on that one wing versus a all.
All one level.
One level, I, I mean, I don't see too many two level schools except for really big ones like Owatonna. High School.
Grand Rapids is all, most of the newer ones are two stories, elementary.
Couple of thoughts on that, we, we actually started testing some ideas of doing this all on one story. Uh, cause initially, there, the costs that you have to overcome with a two-story are. Elevator.
Yeah.
And the two stairwells, and really those are the big, the big differences. Um, the things that made us look at terms of still staying at, as not to say that we couldn't still go one store, we can, we've got the space to do it on the site. But, um, the factors that made us stay, well, let's just stay two store with that academic wing is. Is it does save site area for a future high school, we're not building ourselves into a corner quite so much. Um, even though we know that this is a good site to build on and there are grades out there. Um, it's, you know, it's manageable, it would be what we would expect for a high school site. But with the grade change, the more we shrink the footprint, it does mean a little bit less surface work. But then the big savings is, is that perimeter footing and foundation. Um, when you double the, like take that second level and if you put that down on the first floor.
Yeah.
You basically have to double your foundation. And it kinda really offsets the cost of the elevator and the stairs. Um, so. It, it's really, it's a, it's kind of on the bubble of it's, it's less of a cost issue and more of a. What's our, what's our priority or, you know, what, what sets us up for the long haul? Um, in terms of, it's more of a value judgment, less of an economic judgment because of that foundation versus elevator cost? If that makes sense.
I, and you know, I kinda like having the third, fourth and fifth grade up, up away from those earlier grades. Because developmentally, the children in the earlier grades are at a completely different place than the children who are in. Third, fourth and fifth grade.
Yeah.
And to have that little bit of separation, I don't think it's a bad thing.
One thing to consider, although it, it's not as much of a issue in this, but because we're only talking a three-section school. But you're right, and one of the reasons why you see a lot of schools when they get bigger, like four section and up, you're almost always looking at a two-story. Is also just number of steps during the days, when you gotta line those kiddos up and march them down to recess or take them back. Going up one flight of stairs versus going an extra hundred feet down a hall. It's actually less steps and it's just, it all adds up through the day, you know, trips to the library, trips to the cafeteria, trips to recess. So, um, uh, there again, even for that logic, this plan is kind of on the bubble, you could make an argument either way. Uh, we're not, we're not really fixated on two-story, but we didn't see any reasons why we shouldn't consider it, let me put it that way.
It is less roof maintenance down the road too, you reduced one big chunk of roof. Again, that's twenty, thirty years out, right, but it is another factor.
Yeah, you, you're right Jeff, I forgot, double the roof, double the foundation.
Yeah.
I didn't know most uh elementary schools now are two stories.
Newark, yeah?
Yeah.
I know, it seems weird.
It, it seems counter, a little bit counter to.
Stairs are good for kids, get them walking.
Yeah, I mean.
But like I know Worthington's brand new K two building, there are a couple of like, even five, ten-year-old K two buildings, two stories, K two.
Well, speaking of roofs, let's shift this part on top of that other part.
Three stories?
Yeah.
And then this is our big plan, this is the, you know, originally and I think the, the. Thing to remember is that our original plan was ninety-four thousand square feet. So the first plan, we were down to seventy-seven eight, and then the next one was what, seventy-nine thousand?
Eighty-three.
And this one's eighty-three. Jeff can kinda go through the differences.
Yeah, so this now adds the sixth grade, right? So we'll call it Jen's plan, but it's got the sixth grade on it, so now you've got, you know, a, a second, third and fourth. Uh, fourth, fifth and sixth, or first, second and third, and fourth, fifth and sixth on the second level. And, and the learning commons are more of the same size now. Whereas we had it a little bit less because we had only two grades down on, on the floor novel last time.
And for sixth grade alone, I think it's one point two million, right?
So you can see the difference between fifty-one eight versus fifty-three seven.
I was thinking that we had two uh flex rooms in our original plan.
We had a STEM room and a flex room, so we had. Those two rooms, so it's down being a. Whatever it could be, right, science or technology, art or just kind of a big messy room. And then if, if I zoom in on those, we go back up on. We had sixteen hundred square feet to that and same with the music, so we have two big spaces there. We certainly can divide it up too if we needed it, but then we have one, one flex base and our flex base right now is. Yeah.
By the admin. That's right, yeah.
There it is. It's a bigger classroom, it could be a small one at nine hundred square feet, but we have eleven hundred square feet.
But you are correct in that we did have that classroom, let's say, originally in the original vote, we had planned it as a flex lab. Which would have had a little bit more infrastructure into it, a little bit more square footage. And just to give you a, a quick overview of, you know, this is, this is a tighter. Elementary square footage wise than, than the building before, the big areas where we saw savings. Were, um, some of, some of those space cuts, we, we took the flex lab out. One of the L D rooms, uh, we originally planned for three, we have two. And talking with Andy, that's something we can work through is like, if we still have to trade some of our like our learning commons square footages for an extra L D, I think we've got ability to do that. The other thing that we cut back, we talked about the kitchen and our thoughts on that, we cut that back a bit. Um, another big savings that we did was what Jeff mentioned was, in the spreadsheet that we used originally. We had a grossing factor, twenty percent for circulation. And then we had those learning commons spaces programmed individually. When we actually started laying it out, we got a little creative and we, we overlaid them. And so, uh, we're saving some square footage there just because it's, it's working out really nice the way it's laying out. So we're actually really efficient on our, our circulation than what the spreadsheet said we should have been. The other big thing where we're saving some square footage is in just mechanical space. We had planned for enclosed penthouse areas where you could put the air handling units inside of an enclosed building space. One of the things we're considering now, and we're actually doing this currently on an elementary school out in Cheyenne, Wyoming, where we're taking. The air handling, air handling units, and these are big units, we're not talking about the ones that are down on, on top of the C store. I mean, they're, they're the size of basically a travel trailer. We're setting them side by side. And then we're just building a little vestibule between these units. And these units have like airlocked enclosed doors that people get into, but that vestibule between will bring up a ship's ladder into that space. And kinda, it's kind of a poor man's penthouse is what it is. So we've, we've looked at that idea versus three thousand square feet to build, it's like. Hey, well, we'll play with these package units and, and go that route, so that's some of the conversations behind the scenes we had, so. If you may look at those square footages like, wow, how can they drop the number of the buildings so far, it's like, well, we really looked at. Um, what would be traditionally done and then we looked at how can we multi-purpose some of these spaces overlap? And, and sitting down with the principals and with Dan, they're looking, it's like, that's why we actually went through the exercise of laying it out, it's like, you can't prove it's gonna work until you can actually see it. And they said that this multi-use overlaying learning commons with circulation, they said, that works, and so that's how we got to where we are. So, it was, uh, it was fortunate that it, it's falling together and it's working for the staff to, to share some, it's been great to work with them, so.
I think a lot of the feedback that I got from some of the no votes, um, people made the assumption that new equals bigger. And they were equating enrollment, you know, either being stable or going down with new equals bigger. And so we tried to explain that. New doesn't mean bigger, and in fact, we were trying to right-size for three-section grades instead of four-section grades, right? And so I really feel like the plan that we put forward for the referendum, that we really had sort of scaled down. Um, in, and so I'm worried about cutting even more. I do think that, um, lots of studies and lots of other, um, you know, communities have talked about that once they have built. Schools that they do tend to see some slight increase in enrollment. I don't wanna go through an exercise of cutting so much now, that in a couple of years, if we are fortunate enough to have enrollment, that the community is now saying. Why didn't you got, why did you, why did you go so small, right? And now here we are cramped at the seams again, so I, I, I want to be mindful of not trimming too much. Because I really do feel like we right-sized it to begin with.
Now, conceptually, to that question, um, if you get asked by folks by that in the community. It's actually going the opposite in that when you look at some of our older school facilities. And you look at how much square feet, what's the percentage of the square footage that's actually used for learning, for education? And how much of the square footage is just extra? You know, like hallway spaces, it's just to get from point A to point B. It's oftentimes it's the space where you have a lot of your behavioral issues, the bumping and shoving, the between passing period. And then the mechanical space, all of that. One of the little things that we're finding, uh, in a lot of the newer schools we're doing, is we're asking ourselves from day one, the question is, how can we take every square foot in this building? And make it a space for a learning opportunity? And so that's where a lot of these learning commons come from, uh, these ideas, is you're taking square footage, you're already building into a lot of our buildings that have happened traditionally in our buildings. And now we're designing in such a way to where now teachers and students can use them for learning. And so what's actually gone up is not the square footage, but the efficiency for learning in the square footage where we have to build anyway. And so, that might be a long answer to a short quick question that somebody might ask, but that's really what's happening in, in schools we're building these days.
So we're maximizing the space.
Exactly, that's it.
I have a question about the music room. It's just labeled music. Well, we have a music specialist and we have band. So how does that work?
They currently share one space.
It's just scheduling.
We use our flex room, we use our flex room for some of our elementary's general music. And then he also uses. And then he also uses that for some of his lessons. Um, so they share the main music band room and a flex space.
So are, is there periods during the day that general music is not in there? And that's the time that, and that's the time that the band is able to use that space.
So we get him like eight to eleven. And so he's doing, you know, band. Well then, you know, Lucy's down in the flex room teaching music. Or when she's doing choir and he's doing lessons, they, they swap.
They just, sure.
One thing I remember looking at the maps, a lot of it's just placeholders, so how the design of that music room is gonna lay out? Our music people.
Don't have to be collaborate, collaborate with them.
And that's a really good point, you know, like when it comes to, you know, if we're fortunate enough to get this to pass. I mean, our teachers are gonna be in the planning and the design and all of that. It's not gonna just be us.
Yeah, for example, like that, that band room, right now it's, it's showing as about sixteen hundred feet, give or take on the plan. Actually, in the space program, it's twelve hundred, but there is, there's band storage, there's, you know, office space. There's additional spaces that'll fill in some of these chunks just to dance point. This is just a, making sure that we got the high-level coverage. Do we have space for everything? That's what this exercise was.
One thing just to, to, you know, Cindy brought up, what do we happen if we grow, right? And and, uh, so we went back to the tomographer that worked with us, the John Powers from Applied Insights North that did it as a projection two years ago. Uh, we, how close is his projection? So Dan pulled together a bunch of data information, got it off. And and the projection for twenty, for this school year at twenty-five, twenty-six is, it was that you were gonna be at nine hundred and eighteen kids and you're at nine hundred and twenty-one. We're within three kids. The projections are pretty close. But the thing that Cindy's bringing up that, that's rather intriguing is you have fifties and sixties, right, coming through. Remember the, your enrollment's stabilizing, and his projections are, you're gonna be stabilizing right around that three-section school. But you have a bubble, you have this strange bubble right now that's in, there's just lots of third graders that happen to be living here.
Currently at eighty-six.
It's eighty-six, okay. So yeah, so it's a, it's a big class size, right? So your flex room is important to what Cindy's bringing up, that we have that extra room, you know, and if. If it should be located over by more of the classrooms and set it up by the front door, we'll figure all that out in design. But it's nice to have that one extra classroom in case you have a large weird enrollment number like that that comes at you, right? If they start growing to all eighties, well, that'd be a great thing. That would show we're having elementary growth. Um, and you could start to look at where we can be adding classrooms on in school. In addition, reminder to the board members that you do have lease levy authority to add classrooms, right? So you have the authority to add up to probably about four classrooms based on the size of your district. With board approval, you don't have to go for a referendum for adding on, so we, we don't wanna overbuild. When you do have the authority to add on if you needed to, right? Does that help? Does that help Cindy?
Yeah, and where would we put sixth graders here?
In this building? Yeah, that's an exercise that we haven't gone through yet, right?
We, we haven't gone through that, which has been a very preliminary discussion.
Cause I mean, I think that was in my mind when we, if we kept sixth grade at the new school. And if we did see an increase in enrollment, that was the buffer, right, to be able to shift a grade up to the high school. We would now be losing that, that sort of buffer in my mind.
If we don't build the K through six right now is what you're saying.
Well, one of the reasons we, we spent time on the K-five was at the board meeting, who was seven-oh wanted us to explore the, the pre-K-five building, so that's what we did. But there, there's, the challenge there is it, it's going to a K, going, moving sixth grade to the, to this building. That shouldn't be a building, a physical building decision, that should be a, a, a planning, uh, educational reason and benefits there. The two shouldn't play together, right? If we're gonna move, if there's a reason to move sixth grade to the high school, there should be educational reasons and whether it's staffing space. Things that we can provide sixth graders better at the high school than we can at the elementary. It shouldn't be because we're, we wanna save two million dollars or whatever it is gonna be building here. That's, I'm not necessarily for or against it, I, I just think the two items, and it's gonna be hard to do if we do it at this point because it's gonna be looked at as. Well, you're doing it because you're building a new building, when Andy and Lisa have talked for, you know, two years about, hey. What would it look like knowing enrollments declining and, and staffing shifting? What would it look like to have sixth graders in this building? Unfortunately, now it'll be lumped with the building process and, um. Again, if, 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 if that happens, if we do that down the road, I think it, it should be done for educational purposes, not just for space or whatever, but.
Well, and in a project this size, two million dollars really is not that much, if that's a whole grade. You know what, I, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's not that much money when you look at the. Building itself, if we have the opportunity to grow at the elementary and move our sixth graders at another point. I mean, to cup that two million dollars and then lose all those opportunities and be forcing our sixth graders up here.
The other thing too is look at, and I'm not, it was fun putting the original plan together when we went out. This last two weeks haven't been as much fun because I feel we put the best plan forward in November, now we're having to take from that plan. And and one of the other things that came up in the, in the board survey and our conversations is the taxes and the only way we can address taxes is to reduce the cost. When we start looking for ways to reduce the cost, it's reducing space and, and, uh. Now it's going through, how do we reduce space with the least amount of impact on education and, and what we wanna provide for our students? And, and, and that's what we're doing, so it's, uh. Great when we get down, we bring our number down closer to fifty million dollars. Or wherever we were in and up there, um, was great when we could reduce the bus garage dollar amount, but it's. Not gonna be our best plan.
If you, if you just look at it out of this room from just the general community taxpayer. There, it'll come probably to the fact that, well, they just eliminated a grade to get all this. That's really probably, and we could explain it all day long, and I don't know if we can overcome that in messaging.
Well, and also, if you could have given us this package at this price before, why didn't you? You know what I mean? Like, we, if we can come right back with this smaller package, which is cutting things that we truly needed. You know, it's like, then they would say, why didn't you just come with this smaller one in the first place? Which de, devalues our first plan, which was the best plan that we had.
But the community rejected it, so we got.
Yes, I know.
Another plan that maybe we.
But we have to make changes one way, the higher or lower, right? Like we have to.
Just, just remember, th- this isn't an uncommon exercise in construction. Not at all. I've been involved with plenty of them. I use the term of value engineering. That's typically what happens. The other issue is the general population don't understand. And we, you know, I mean, and that's just, these are, those are two reality checkpoints that we have to deal with, with people when you're doing that. It's very simple. The other thing that Cindy said, you build, you get better. You're typically your enrollment or your business or whatever you're doing will grow. I've been involved with enough of that to know that you don't build, not to see some sort of growth or project some sort of growth in it because. Shiny buildings, shiny things attract and is better. And just the classroom setting and the setting, people will get that as a consumer, as a, as a parent will think that's. Will, will have that in their mind that this is a better place to learn. So it's gonna attract, it will attract people. Uh, the, the younger parents here can probably see it. You were very adamant on this thing because you know. This would have been great for, for your kid, obviously, right? You have to think about too, you, you're gonna, if you move the sixth grade. So eventually, you, you have to accommodate that in high school, so then. You have to go with a bigger footprint of, of that facility to accommodate that a little bit. It, there is some sense.
We don't though, because we have, we have bigger classes leaving, so we're going from four section.
You're talking down the road.
Down the road.
We gotta build them eventually.
Eventually. Eventually. That's, that's what I'm thinking eventually, um.
So making our high school project just more expensive down the road because we have to have it for that? So which end of the timeframe?
There's some good practical reasons. I mean, create a middle school model essentially, we've talked about that. There's nothing bad about that whatsoever, having those grades together. It's super common in many districts.
I don't think it's real, I don't think that that's the most important thing right now. And I think that to move sixth grade to the high school, we, I mean, just from a, a, the outside looking in. I think that the elementary school can better serve and educate sixth grade than the high school can. The high school, not that the high school can't, but it's already, it's been doing it for, since the beginning of time. And, and I think the time to think about creating middle school. Is when we get to the point where we are looking twenty years down the road at building a high school. And, and then turn, take, make a wing of that new building then of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Yeah, and maybe shift around then, then you're building it for that. The not building the sixth grade classrooms now does mean too, the cost of those sixth grade classrooms down the road are that much more expensive. At the new high school, you know, so your tax impacts one's end or the other, but with construction cost. Almost better to have your base of pre-K through six there now. And be able to move into growth with those if we needed to.
That's why we'll back to our, our board meeting, our last work session was seven-oh asking us to look at.
Yeah.
Pre-K five options, that's why.
Yep, yeah.
Well, cause it's a great option if you wanna just cut the dollars. We do need to look at the education.
Well, and I think it's, it's wise that we've gone through this exercise. Because we do need to see, and we do need to have this conversation about what is the best thing to do at this point? Is it to move sixth grade or is it to just? You know, I think it's okay that we have this conversation, and I think it's really good for us to see the cost difference in the building.
We have a number for comparison.
Right.
Plain and simple. We didn't have that before.
I, I just suggest that you take some time, oh Cindy.
I was gonna say, I, I guess in my, in voting, um, for the, you know, to go ahead and to look at the pre-K through five. I guess from, from my standpoint, that was just a vote in favor of nothing's off the table. Not so much of that was an option that I wanted to look at. It's just anything that you're willing, any ideas anyone has, nothing's off the table. That was my sort of attitude. And then I think kind of just to follow up on a question I think someone posed a few minutes ago. I don't think that the people who voted no on a referendum voted no because they didn't like our specific plan. I think they voted no for a variety of different reasons. Either they didn't realize, um, maybe they didn't have enough information, we didn't provide enough education, or they didn't have enough. Information. They didn't want their taxes to go up. Um, they didn't realize or understand how significant the costs are going to be to remodel. Ripple sign. In fact, I think that I personally believe that those costs to remodel Ripple sign will be fairly identical to what the cost would be going forward with this plan. Um, and so I, I don't know that I am in favor of changing a whole lot of, um, our proposal on this particular model. Because I don't know that, I don't really believe that people voted no because they thought that there was something wrong with this specific model. I think that they voted no for other reasons.
And, and I, I think what's important is, you know, you don't just make a rash decision, like you guys thinking through it and you. You make sure your admin team has some time to talk to staff about their feelings on, on that, and then you as individuals, if you know. Elementary parents, well, what do they think? Because you could end up upsetting the apple garden, losing a lot of votes, because people don't want sixth grade at the high school. Right? Uh, so it, it might backfire on you.
I, I have some similar concerns that Cindy has about, I, for some reason, I don't know what it is, but this makes me, it, I feel like. This is limiting our space, the, the needed space to, for our staff to do the work that they need to do. And to do it in the most effective and efficient way. And.
I think I really heard like people, it, it's not the amount of the tax increase, it's just a tax increase, period. And when you look at, we're looking at a ten million dollar difference here or, you know, all these different variations. What that breaks down to is somebody's cost per month with this project on your two-hundred thousand dollar house? It, it's gonna be so negligent, well, it doesn't matter, it's gonna, it really boils down to the simple fact. They can vote no, this is the only tax you can ever vote no for. When you said that, I'm like, yeah, it really kinda hit me. It's like, yeah, good point. We can't vote as a home property owner, I can't vote no on any taxes other than school-related, didn't it?
I really wish that people would pull out their tax statements though and run their numbers, because when I just got my tax statement. I am going to pay five thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars for less than two acres of property within the city limits of Aiken. Next year, and only three hundred and twenty-eight dollars of that goes to the school district. So people really need to look at where their money's going, because they do like to yell at us. But I mean, I will lay my tax statements down for anyone in this community to look at. Because three hundred and twenty-eight dollars of almost six thousand dollars goes to school, a service I literally use every single day for my family. And the rest of that money goes to services I do not use every single day, maybe the roads, but most of those are state highways that I drive on. So, you know, I'm like, I really think that it is down to that they get to vote no. But we do need to point out the fact that these other places just keep raising their prices without any option and without any return on those tax dollars.
The, the comparison arguments we made with people, when I explained it to them, it didn't. They were just like glazier, like, no, my taxes are gonna go up. I'm like, well, but look how low your taxes are. I don't, I don't care.
Well, the difference is, is that we're telling them that their taxes are gonna go up. In, in the other entities, they don't come out and say, we're gonna raise your taxes because we're gonna do this. And, oh, by the way, you don't get to vote on it, but we're just letting you know, we're gonna raise your taxes. Now, instead of paying three thousand dollars a year, you're gonna pay five.
Well, this is fiscal disparity tax on commercial properties that literally has no public meaning. They don't even tell you who actually gets that money. About fourteen hundred dollars goes to that, and I have no idea who I even ask what that tax dollar is for. Maybe Matt can answer that question for me in the room, but it's just there and there's no public meaning.
Anyway, uh, you know, the other thing that you listen to, this, this is a really, you know, it's a fifty thousand foot view of what we're doing. And I believe, but there was, there was a lot of people saying, well, did you, you, you haven't even looked at this, you haven't even looked at the cost of this, you haven't looked at the cost. Well, I mean, I think that's why we hired you guys is because there's a general, there's a general price tag that fits within these areas that. There are some estimates that are, you know, you're putting together a lot of things because you know, because you've done them, and we know from the past of, because a lot of it's public, that we know. Where it's gonna lie. So I think people were thinking that, you know, they want this whole thing totally laid out. And that's just not the way these things were. Cause you're not, you're not making a decision on that. We, we're making a decision on a dollar mill, we're gonna live with a dollar mill. And by the way, it'll still probably get valued.
It's still gonna be hard. Everyone's not gonna get what they want, no.
As you said, that's a conversation for another day. I've heard this a couple of times here, right? So these things are still, these are a process that goes through and it's very, 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 it, it, it gets really in-depth and really involved. I appreciate your effort. Done so far because you guys have, you know, you've been in that, been in there, but it'll even get more. It'll get more. And I, I think general public.
It'll get more, and I, I think general public needs to understand that, and. You know, again, the ones that have been involved with these types of projects, it's, it's very. It's very, it, it takes a lot, I mean, it's months and months and months and months of meetings and meetings, meetings to do it, and going through every thing, cause every little. Every little piece there gets put up on the board, and then you're deciding which way the door is going, which way the handle is going, which way. Where the locks are going, and where the cabinet's going, which way the cabinets swing, how, you know.
How many outlets are there?
How many outlets, I mean, this is just, it's a. And then that's when you bring your teachers in, and your, 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 your staff in, cause then they help do all that, so. It, it's, it's a huge process, and you, you can't get to that, you can't get to the final thing, you know we're gonna work with this number. That's it, so.
I, as I, I super appreciate the huge efforts you guys went through to look at opportunities, where, where can we shave costs here and there? And that type of thing. You know, it's like we're talking about garage, no bus garage, trimming things, here's another option. Rearranging the bus garage, that's, I really appreciate that. I didn't. Um, when I said, let's take a look at this, I wasn't envisioning. The level of stuff that had, was gonna have to happen. In my little world, uh, to, to, to say, what does?
A lot easier for you guys to do this.
Whoa, wait a second, we're gonna have to bring in our whole engineering team, and, and this is gonna be a. This is gonna be a huge deal, but um, it's. A great learning experience looking at all this.
Part is we wanna bring back. A plan where we could answer and address questions.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is the sixth grade one, I think.
Yeah.
So this is closest we have.
Between two and three is just sixth grade classroom?
Yeah, what's that?
So the difference between two and three is just the sixth grade?
Yes.
Pretty much, and then a little bit more of the common space, the learning commons areas are a little bit bigger, just because there'd be another.
Another grade in there.
And another grade level in the building.
And there's something else I wanna bring up too, because, you know, I see these things that come out, and, and you know, they. This board isn't managing this project, okay, I mean, we, we're, we're. Once construction starts, so, once you're going through, once construction starts, there's, we, we have representation that handles this, right, owner representation, owner reps. Things like that that are gonna be doing that, because there'll be decisions that'll be made in that period of. Uh, during construction that happens at the same time, and, yeah, we're. We're not the construction experts within this part of it here, and I, and I. And I think. The taxpayers and people need to understand that, that's why we hire, that's why we get, and we, we, we look at that to get. The best possible way, but it's a, it's a, it's a target that continues to move and continues to go through this whole thing. Uh, and it's a complex thing, so, I mean, it's very complex, you guys have been through it, it's, you've been through it several times, and. It has to get done correctly, but people need to understand.
Roland, just, I, I really appreciate your confer, your, your statements there, because you, you've got that, that experience, you've been involved in. I'll just give you another level of what we've done here, right? We went back, we, we brought Nathan in, who has been leading school construction projects throughout the region, to do a deeper dive on our numbers, right? What do we have for cost per square foot for construction? How is it compared to the most recent schools that we built? Are we on the money, or are we too high? Or are we too low, cause we're trying to predict bids, what they're gonna be a year and a half from now, when we go out to bid, right? And Nathan went and looked at, we just opened bids for Oseo for a new elementary school. And their cost per square foot is just right on like, I don't know, two dollars a square foot less than what we have, I mean, we are right on the money. And so we feel really confident when we're putting numbers in front of you, we got the right number, right? We also have a contingency, we also have construction inflation, cause we know it's not today's number, it's.
But the, but the company needs to understand that two percent isn't, there's, it's not their flex.
It's not fluff.
It's not flex.
It's not fluff, no.
So.
Just construction. You go out and put construction, actual type of construction, you have to keep a really close eye.
So do you think we, when we market Roland, that we need to market our professionals on top of that? Because there were comments of, I don't think this school board is capable of making these decisions. Yeah, so we are marketing our board members as the community members, and we need to market our professionals as, we aren't the professional. You are the professional, and we are paying these great professionals to do this, so like introduce them within our marketing.
And that was the, the conversation that I had with a number of people, I said, I'm not an engineer. I'm a mechanical drafter slash pastor, I'm not an engineer. My, I view my job as a board member to be able to say, hey, what about this music room? Is there enough space there for choir, for general music and for band? I, it's, this is about education for me. They're the experts. And. Not only do we as the board need to listen to them, but the community needs to listen to them too.
And, and everybody, sorry. Yeah, what are you doing about traffic flow? As a board, I'm like.
Yeah, I was like, mind doc?
Their specialty is traffic safety, that's all they do. Not, I'm a forester, I, I.
Give me my orange flashlights out there.
Where you put Roland and trying out their best.
Round up the.
Alright, sorry.
We gotta get some financial, you know, what this looks like, they gotta do next, where you're going.
Yeah.
Uh, so Matt Hammer, who got here, came from fighting traffic and slick roads and everything else, so. We talked about the engineers and the architects and the hoops we've been running them through. Um, we've been throwing numbers at Matthew and, and Ellers for the last two days, and every time he sends us up, we're saying, no, plug this number in instead.
Thank you, Matthew.
It's the whole team, it's really been, especially the last couple of days, but even a couple of days last week when Jeff and I were, were, were drilling on this. And Ford Kent's trying to retire, but we just keep calling him back into our.
We're here for another year, he wants us to pass this as much as we do.
Matthew, a chance to talk a little bit about this, we're gonna talk about some scenarios, I'll, I'll talk, mention the I triple R. We did meet with the city today, they're very interested in supporting us to go back to the I triple R.
Okay.
Um. I, we haven't been told no, so as long as we haven't been told no. Um, I'm gonna assume we still got a shot at getting our five, getting the five million dollars. Um, the one thing that basically we've been told is. Gonna, on a new build, and they would, before they'd consider it, they'd wanna see and, and the new plan, or what the plan is for the next. Referendum, uh, before they do that. Um, not a whole lot of new information from, uh, the last board meeting, but. Um, other than I have had another conversation with Jeff Anderson with the Costin Group, and, um, they're working. They're, they're, they're keeping, keeping us in the, in the conversation, so.
Did, when you met with the city, was it, who did you meet with?
We met Gary Tibbetts and Jen Thompson, then we had Mark Jeffers from the county, and the new county administrator, now he's reading his name. Uh, they, they were, were there, and they were there in the meeting, and, um, we really talked more. About how we can bring the, the conversation of the potential housing and lots and the things that could open up. Uh, since that's become a little bit of the conversation coming from the city, and, and why maybe some city council members couldn't support us. So we're, we're looking at some options there, and, and how do we. Market that moving forward if, if that's where we go, so. But very positive response from the city, we had, um. Uh, Brian Pizarra came in, we talked about some of the fire things, good conversation with him, and that's where we got, where we. Most, we are gonna need that second road, which is gonna answer some of the questions coming out of Sixth Avenue. Um, you know, if we, we, if we do low maintenance or whatever, just an emergency access, then that doesn't become a. Generally used access to the, to the school. Um, so we've been having good conversations, and we're, 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 uh, just gonna keep moving forward with that. And I'll get back to where I almost had Matthew go here a few minutes ago to talk, but here we go, we'll let him.
Yeah.
Through our numbers, so.
I'll shut up.
Yeah, so we're really. We're looking at scenarios, right, and we're re-updating our numbers, and what we're representing in the top is where we were. Right, during the referendum, and I'll restate kinda, we thought where we're at from the standpoint of the tax impact. That we were providing, the financing plan we were providing, um, to finance the projects. Was a great plan, right, from the standpoint of the term we had selected. Um, where we were from the standpoint of our future phasing, and how that was gonna position us from that perspective, right? So really where we're at now is like looking at, um, obviously the reduced scope. What that means for a proposed ballot question, when we potentially, this is assuming. Potential as soon as a spring election, right, and there's some factors in, in that, that we can talk a little bit high level about. Um, and then. What does that mean from an annual tax impact, and let's not. Get too tied in to the project numbers, cause those are continuing to move, but. We're really looking at what that ballot amount would be, what would mean if we could get the I triple R grant. And then what does that mean for an overall project? So this looks at the same term right here, so a twenty year term, we'll look at lengthening the term too. Um, and obviously with lengthening the term, just think of it as a whole mortgage, right? We're looking at longer terms, that asset however is gonna have a longer, uh, a long useful life, so it's not. Necessarily an issue from our perspective with a lengthening a term, because. A new elementary school is gonna have a useful life for the community for well beyond what the debt's gonna be. Um. The thing that we are considering, right, is we're putting the plan together, is if there's a phase two, and we have a twenty-five year term on the existing commitments, right? The capacity then for future expansion then just becomes, we're, we're have those commitments that are out there for a longer period of time. And the interest cost obviously that we're gonna anticipate to incur is gonna be higher at the longer term, just like you would be if you're taking on a thirty year mortgage versus a twenty year mortgage. So baseline here is same term. Um, we've looked at, um, as Jeff stated, uh, your, what's been going on in your tax base. We put in some assumptions, um, for some, uh, initial growth, especially in the early years, based on what we're seeing. Um, in your overall tax base, and then we've narrowed down now from the standpoint of what we think is gonna happen. Um, with interest rates, so if you go back to the summer in June, right, when we were putting the numbers together. The volatility in the markets was crazy, and I'm not saying there's not volatility right now, um, but we've got a little bit more of a trajectory. Um, so we've, um, reduced our te, interest rate assumption slightly based on, um, the assumptions that we put together here as well. So I'll just orient you to this, this is if you look at the top one represents a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home. The bottom one represents a three hundred thousand dollar home, that ties back to the, um, um. Information that we were really using as part of the, um, information that was provided as the information campaign.
Matt, can I just stop?
Yeah, yes.
I think that we did get some feedback, um, even from members that are in our audience tonight, thinking that. Uh, asking where we were getting that hundred and seventy-five thousand and that three hundred thousand, and I think people. Um, you know, with higher level valued homes, we're feeling like we weren't being transparent as a board, so if you could. Maybe talk a little bit about where those, those, um.
Yep, I can.
Where they came from.
Yep, so obviously you have different, um, properties at different spots, right? So your, um, properties that are out in your lakes, and when you look at your average as a whole, right, district wide, the overall value is higher. A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar really represents what was close to average in the city of Aiken.
Okay.
Right? So, um, that's why that number was picked. Your overall district average, cause you have a wide variety of property valuations, right, was closer to a three hundred thousand dollar home, so that was really the. Impetus of picking those two values.
So you use actual property values and did some math formulas to come up with those?
And those are numbers that we're knowing, right, we know what the average residential home value across the district is, and we know. What the average residential home value is within the city of Aiken. In the city of Aiken, it's closer to that hundred and seventy-five, and across the district as an average, right, and you take on all properties. Um, it's closer to that higher number of three hundred thousand.
Yeah, and I know that people really appreciated having that calculator that we have online to be able to enter in their own. Information and then to see what that monthly and that yearly amount was, so thank you, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so that's, I mean, these numbers are just representative, we picked a couple targets just because they were. Things from a reference point that we had as part of, um, the election information we had out there. So if we, if we start in the top, question one was about eighteen dollars a month, or about two hundred and ten dollars a year. Um, question two was two hundred and thirty-one dollars a year when we added, um, the community center, so that was nineteen dollars a month. And as we come down, if we look at. Funding approximately a fifty-three and a half million dollar project. Um, with the I triple R and without the I triple R. Um, we're about fifteen dollars a month, or thirteen dollars a month, um. Um, for funding a project at that level, and then if we're all the way down at fifty. Um, those are the numbers there that are represented, so if you look at that kind of as a whole, it's about, um. It's about a twenty dollar a month spread, that five million dollar, or twenty dollar a year spread, um, with that five million dollars. Now, you'll see that the spread between the project costs and the bond amount is probably higher than you would have seen, um. During the election, and the reason for that is. Um. The school district, as the board, you're gonna be setting your levy here in December. That is revenue for fiscal the year twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if we're in a situation where we would run an election as sometime next spring, for example. We can't levy for the first interest payment because we've already put the levy in place. So what school districts have to do when they're in that situation is they actually have to add that amount to the, to make the first year's interest payment, and we call that capitalized interest. Which means the bond amount goes up, right, because we have to be able to cover the first interest payment as part of the, um, ballot amount.
Which is why November is usually your best.
Yep, yep, so that's, a lot of times, those are considerations, right, as, um, it increases the, the ballot amount. Um, because the timing of it, we can't get the levies on in time to actually make those, that first payment, cause you're required to make it for. An interest payment within twelve months of issuing. Um, you can see, I, I won't spend a lot, but you, you can kinda see the, the balance on the bottom there, that's just takes the same analysis up here. And it just applies it to a higher value home. So as we go here, this is where we started to look at ways to bring that. Monthly cost down. And like I said, this comes within a cost, right, cause we're extending the term, the interest cost is higher. Right, over that period of time, but it's not necessarily what I would say an uncommon thing, I mean, we're looking at. A new building, right, you can issue general obligation bonds up to thirty years. A twenty-five year term's not necessarily out of the question, it just lengthens the time we are repaying, and it increases the interest cost. Then as part of the plan. Um, I will say, after we get past twenty-five years right now, especially with what we're seeing in the market then, our cost really goes up. Cause when you think of, um, where you're at from, in the yield curve right now, and where investors are looking at from a, a money perspective. The yield curve and the cost as we pass twenty-five years gets quite a bit higher. And really the benefit that we get from going much higher is not, is not, there's not much benefit to, to lowering the taxes. But, um, this gives you that same analysis, and the numbers are identical except for that we lengthened the term. So as you look down, um, at a fifty-three and a half million dollar project with, um, if we had to fund it all with no I triple R grant. Um, we're about thirteen dollars a month, or about hundred and fifty dollars a year. And then as you go down, if we're closer to fifty dollars, or fifty million dollars. Um, we're about twelve dollars a month, hundred and forty-four dollars a year, or if we. Had the I triple R at the same level, right, and we're funding a fifty million dollar project, then our bond amounts. About forty-six million, and we're down closer to that, um, ten or eleven dollars a month, or about a hundred and twenty-nine dollars a year on a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home. In the city. And then those same, that same analysis is done below. Um. And this, really what our focus here was is. If we think taxes is an issue, right, as part of the plan, that we're getting that feedback, how could we lower that? Um, and this is the way to do it, and I think that twenty-five year mark is probably the mark that would. We would probably say would, in your case, would be the farthest we would wanna go out.
Well, especially because we need another building.
Hmm. Now. If we get to the point, we've got, we've, we've reduced our cushion, right, in our interest rate. If we get to the point where this was successful, right, for example, we're not necessarily tied to having to issue a twenty-five year. Um, a term of twenty-five years. Um, if interest rates were better with the time of sale, we could try to reduce that amount, um. Um, and reduce the term, right, and try to stay within the tax tolerance that the public supported as part of the referendum. So that's something we do all the time, right, as we're putting numbers together, is that if we can get better results when we, um. Go to actual market. Um, we can, we can reduce that amount.
Interest is better.
Hmm.
We could, even though we maybe put out there, it'd be twenty-five year, interest is better when we stay within that.
Yeah, we could look to reduce to twenty-four, or we could keep it the same, and, um, try to create some capacity in your. Yeah, we could look to reduce to twenty four, we could keep it the same and try to create some capacity in your plan at a future date. There's other things that we can do at that point in time. So, and that's a very common thing for, for us to do as we get, as we get to actually selling the bonds. Because just like the construction side, as we're putting estimates together right now of where market conditions would be at the time of sale, which at this point in time, we're at least six months away from selling a bond. So we've gotta put our best guess on where we think rates are gonna be. And then we're gonna be able to get you the funds within what we communicated to the taxpayers. So what is any, I mean, you can give your feedback and thoughts here and I can try to answer any questions folks have about, about this.
I don't feel like the five years is worth the crap. You know what I mean? Like you go up to the top one at near eighteen to nineteen, down to thirteen. That's not enough to add five years and set back possibilities for me of longer term. Because that's one thing that came up a hundred thousand times. What are you gonna do about the high school? So extending the bond to me doesn't seem like a good choice because we're gonna have to answer, what are we gonna do with that high school? And to try to make it longer, you know, I don't know that we can, how do we explain that maintenance away to the community after, for that three dollars or six dollars that you're gonna get out of that bond? You know, that's not enough for me, I don't think, to extend it that far.
Yeah, I'm not in real, I'm, I mean, just my gut reaction is I'm not in favor of extending to twenty five years. And, and I don't, I think that people who, who say I couldn't afford for my taxes to raise, what they want is zero increase. So it doesn't matter if it's eleven dollars or a hundred and ten dollars a month. It doesn't matter. They, they're gonna vote no. There, there is just a segment of our population that is going to vote no. Just because they want no tax increase. I also think that, and we, we didn't have a crystal ball to know what was gonna happen in November. And I think that with all of the things that are happening in our society around us, the cost of groceries is going up, the, the people's concerns and fear about healthcare costs. All of that played in to how people were voting. They did, they didn't have those numbers solidified in their monthly budget to know. And I, I think, and I, I, like Cindy said earlier, I think that there were, I talked to someone not too long ago who said, had I have known this, I would not, I voted no. And I wouldn't have voted no, had I have had all the facts. And so I think that as much as we, we have been as transparent as anybody. And it's not about transparency, it's about communicating the information to people. And there were pockets of people in our community that did not receive the information that they needed. And so I, they're gonna, I, like you said, there's just, there's a segment of the population that's just gonna vote no.
I think we need to look at this as a community though, because we have voted no for years, decades. We have voted no. It has never been a priority here. I don't care if, you know, at which point we've asked. We as a community do not come out in support of our school like others do. I'd love to say that it was just the tax impact, but what, sixty five percent or seventy percent of referendums passed? Levis passed this last November? Yeah, which we weren't seeing in the years prior to this. So people are coming back. So this is an Aiken community problem with them coming back to old past stuff. Like so, I mean, we can talk all day about what we can do to get them to vote yes, but this is a community pattern. We have made a pattern of this for over a half a century of saying no. We've gotten how many in that time? Maybe operating levies only. In that, yeah, with you for sixteen years. Prior to that, Ed only ever got operating stuff and we got the one in two thousand and one, I suppose, and eighty three. And then this was built in seventy two or whatever.
Well, I think we've reached a tipping point because I, as a board member, do not feel comfortable to ask our staff and our employees and the children in our community to continue to go to work and to go to school in substandard conditions. I'm not willing to ask them to do that anymore. And so, you know, I, I'm, I'm, at this point, something is going to give here. The community is going to either ask, or they're either going to pass a referendum or we are going to have to use our levy authority to remodel and to do the things that we have to do. To make the buildings that these people have to go to work and go to school in, to make them safe. And so I'm, I don't think it's wise to push this out to twenty five years because I'm, I'm an above the board person. I'm not telling anybody, we're not coming back in eighteen or twenty years to ask to build a high school, because we are. We are. And so if we push it out to twenty five years, we're still going to owe on these bonds when it's time that we have to build a high school. And I, I just, I don't think it's wise. And, and why pay all that extra interest for a few dollars that people are gonna save in their monthly tax bill? It's, I mean, it's less than a gallon of gas.
And there can be a variation between this too, right? As you look at this, so this is kind of giving you the bookend of where things could go from the, the cost perspective. But if there's a target, right? We could look at an alternative term like twenty two years too.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment too. I, I, I would also want to stay with twenty years because I do, I know, I think our last, prior to this referendum, we were asking for a new high school. Since that time, we've had at least three major insurance claims where we were able to essentially remodel this room being one of them, right? With water damage or fire damage, we've received different, you know, state and federal grants to redo, you know, bathrooms and front entry. And so last time, you know, we asked the voters for a new high school. We've since been able to remodel mostly out of insurance money. I think that we are hopeful that we'll be able to get twenty years, fifteen to twenty years out of this building, right? Which is now why we're focusing on Rippled Side. And so I am trying to be cognizant of the amount of time people are going to be paying on this compared to the amount of time where we're gonna be coming back and asking to build a new high school. Because I do think that in twenty years, we will be at the same juncture with this high school building as we are at Rippled Side right now, right? So I too want to just, I think, stick with the twenty, twenty year portion, or twenty year timeline as well, so.
I mean, your taxes overall, like, I mean, it's no surprise, right? Like as you look at them, because you don't, you're not paying on any buildings right now for the matter of. I mean, you have a little bit outstanding debt for some other pieces, but it's nothing from the standpoint that is major from an infrastructure, which means your tax rates are, are low.
Maybe that's part of our marketing. We're mortgage free right now. We know we're asking for a mortgage, but that's because we need it, we need something new. We've been mortgage free for a very long time as a community for our school buildings.
And I can just, just add something, you know, just, just a comment, but we just failed it. We build within that twenty years. Never been a better plan, right? But now we just kicked the can down another six months because we failed it. And, and until you pass something, you don't have bonds even to worry about wrapping around. I do think you gotta really think about extending the term, because you gotta get this down where taxpayers can afford it to get going. And like Matthew brought up, we can do a twenty two year term or twenty three year term. And if interest rates coming better, you can back it down to that twenty or something. If interest rates are better than what you have started here, oh. You gotta get something passed. You gotta get starting some debt. Because you don't have any. You're one of the only two districts that doesn't have any. Your lowest taxes in the region. You, you're building, you got challenges both. You, you, you gotta get something started. Because every year you're not, the, the high school's getting kicked down farther. Because you're not gonna, you're not gonna have bonds to wrap it up for your high school. So, I don't know, I just, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I'd also point out that if you look at question one for the three hundred thousand dollar house, it's four hundred and nine dollars annually. And if you look at the PK through six plus transportation, assuming that you're getting five million dollars from the I triple R, which we don't know. But that drops it to two seventy two. I don't know of anybody that looks at a tax statement and says four oh nine versus two seventy two and doesn't say, boy, that's a significant change. So you need two hundred and eleven more positive votes.
So we need movement.
Yeah, you need something, you need something to change people's mind or you need something that people are willing to come out and support it. And it's usually more, more efficient to go find a positive vote than it is to try to flip a negative vote. Because to Don's point, the negative ones are pretty much gonna stay negative. It's very difficult to flip a negative vote. They may stay home and not vote, but you're not gonna go from a no to a yes. But there's an awful lot of people out there that didn't vote. And, you know, you're looking for that carrot that's going to get you there. Because if you don't change something, you're not gonna get an elementary, you're never gonna get a high school either. Because the cost is considered, just continue to escalate. And you can remodel and you can do that for years and years and years. But you're, you're gonna be in structures that are suboptimal for what you're trying to do for your kids.
Could we show some of that wraparound? Like you brought us all those graphs, Matthew. When you showed us our original plan, we talked about where we built the high school and how that would wrap around. Was that on our website? I guess because I got the information from you guys, I didn't dig that deep. Was something like that on the website that maybe would help answer, like what happens when we need a high school down the road? Could we show them those wraparound chart kind of things to maybe get people to grasp how that ends up working? I may feel more comfortable at the twenty five years if they could see why we originally picked the twenty years, you know? But if they wanna pick it at the twenty five and they can see that wraparound and what our original thought process was.
Yep, and we certainly can get that information. I mean, I think what that illustrates, right? There's an upcoming, there's another subsequent increase, right, coming as part of the plan, right? So that, from an information perspective, could, may or may not be helpful to you, right?
The high school's already muddying the waters. So we need some answers for it.
They know it's coming, it's just a matter of when.
Yeah, yeah. But maybe if we can show them why we originally picked the twenty year, we came back at twenty five. You know, but this would be because the high school would then, this would be a bigger increase, which is why we didn't choose that the first.
Yeah, and just because we're at twenty five, right, doesn't mean we can't, even in ten years from now, have a wraparound structure. Right? So like, I mean, we can illustrate that if you guys wanna see that of how that could play out like ten years from now, right? Because at ten years, you're gonna have ten years of this bond paid off. You'll only have fifteen left or twelve left or whatever term we pick. And, and we can have some wraparound effect to defer some of the payments there and, and push them out too. So we can show you how that lays out just from an information perspective, especially just for your guys' purpose and how that can play out.
Well, and I think that the general, first of all, all of this is foreign to the general public. The, the financing is just so complicated that, that the general public doesn't understand it. And I, I think that even in bonding, we're not talking about your normal thirty year home mortgage. And, oh, I decided I'm gonna refinance because I wanna remodel the kitchen. It, it, it doesn't work like that. That's not the way this financing works. And so I, it, it might be helpful for, for people to be able to see that.
Just a, just a caveat, your, your first statement is absolutely correct. The financing gets to be speculative to some degree. Because we don't know the answers and we don't. I just, I'm working on a job in Michigan County. They ended up at a twenty two year loan because that was the lowest interest rate. It was lower than twenty, and it was lower than twenty five. Why? That's what the markets decided that that was going to be the sweet spot at that point. So again, there's gonna be flexibility and that's really what Aylers is gonna do, is at the time the bonds are offered, they're gonna give you the best counsel they can. But to try to explain that to the general public, oh, boy, that's
He's so great at this. He knows all of this stuff and this is why we put this.
But, but they're not voting on whether it's a twenty year
Is they're voting on either what their monthly cost is. Supposedly sixty percent of the people that go to buy a car are interested in the monthly payment. The monthly payment is way more interesting than what the final payment is. But there are a group that look at the final payment and they're much more interested in the terms of the lease. Or the terms of the, the purchase. They wanna know, is it five years? Is it seven years? I just found out you can buy a lone boat with a twenty year loan. Why in the heck would anybody with a right mind do that? But anyway, getting back to what, what the board can sell and what can change somebody's vote is your monthly payment just dropped by a hundred and twelve dollars a year. Or your a hundred year annual payment dropped under twelve dollars a year, or your monthly payment dropped by eight bucks a year. So those are the things the board can go, hey, we sharpened our pencil, we looked at everything, we cut it down, we reduced things. You told us that this plan was not acceptable. We thought it was the best plan that there is and we still stand behind. That's the best plan there is and you said no. So we went out and we got a different plan. Okay, does it have a little bit longer timeframe to pay off? Very few people are going to focus on that. They're gonna focus on, okay, you're spending fifty three point five million rather than sixty four point four. And my monthly or annual payment went down measurably.
Well, we have to keep in mind we're in a retirement community. There, some of them don't plan on being in their homes for twenty five more years. They don't care how long we're gonna pay for this. They care for the five years to ten years to fifteen years. They're going to be paying for it. So maybe we do have to look at it.
I mean, that's really a, it's a lot, it's a reason why municipalities spread out some of these commitments too, right? Because as people come and go and people move in and people leave, right? The people that are benefiting from facilities are actually contributing towards the taxes then. So fifteen years from now, it's gonna be different people than they are today.
And, you know, one thing I think to share with you, because we do a lot of school projects, right? There, when a school's doing a roof or a parking lot or remodeling or indoor air quality, you might be doing a five year bond or something. Because you, it's, it's, it's not a longer term asset, right? Building a whole new school is gonna last well beyond twenty five years. So you're, you're, you, you gotta kind of think about it like that, right? And I think, when we, when we come back in January and February, we talk about, what, people say fix your roof. Okay, well, you fix a roof, but it's gonna cost taxpayers. And you do a five year bond on your roof, and you do a five year bond on some of those types of things. The, the tax impact, though, they're gonna be pretty high. Like, you're not bonding those over twenty five years. You can't. The, the bank's winning a lecture, right? Because you're, you're bonding outside the, the asset life. You can't do that, right? It's just something to think about.
So I, my thoughts, I, I'm very okay with going with twenty five years on this. It just plays out better to the people that are really conscious about, you know, the, the cost side of it. You know, in a short term matter. I, I go on the, I tell, I pay very little for taxes here. I actually pay, with all the credits on my property, I pay a third in taxes what I paid twenty five years ago on a tiny house on four acres in Raneland, Wisconsin. And it's, it's astounds me that anybody even talks about taxes here because they're so low in comparison to other places. But it's just, they are what they are. Nobody wants a tax increase. Nobody wants to hear that from somebody saying, I, I pay almost nothing in taxes. I mean, I have neighbors, but their credits, they actually don't pay, they pay zero taxes. They actually make money. And it, and it's, it's astounding. But that's a whole different story. And it, and it's, it's astounding, but um, that's a whole different story. But um, you can't get those credits living in the city of Aiken, but we can outside of it. But I think having a story, reducing some of the the cost of the project, and and. Refinancing it for twenty-five years. Will reduce the amount, the other thing it does is that. When you, we rework the numbers on a, on a real remodel for, for. That awful facility over there, it it's gonna be a no-brainer. Like, right now, peo- the thoughts are with our rough estimates, it was double the cost to build the. We worked this back, it's, it's not gonna be double the cost anymore, it's gonna be, whatever, thirty percent more for a new building? That, that's a no-brainer for people.
Well, and when you put it on the different bonding schedules, cause like we talked, that's five, right, five years on those usually? So trying to get that same. Half of the amount in five years on their taxes is going to be a massive amount. After we just talked about all of this, and then thinking about how most of our retired people are our hardest sell. I think maybe going into the twenty-five years with the ability to refinance down the road, that we know we can be able to do that. It's better to plan for that, because in fifteen years or ten, fifteen years, we will have a whole new set of homeowners. That would be our tax base, so. I'm looking at it as a forty-two-year-old that's going to pay this for the next twenty-five years. But a lot of our voters are in the sixty-five plus, who are not going to be paying it for the full twenty-five years, so. I'm willing, I guess, to move it to the twenty-five-year mark if it's gonna get us moving forward.
I think that it um. Whether it's twenty-two, twenty-five, I, it, it is all gonna depend on. The way things look. When we get ready to go buy bonds. I think it's a conversation that we can have now, but I think it's not a decision we can make now, if that makes sense.
We, we do need to submit review and comment to the Department of Education, and to do that, we gotta put a number on it.
But if we put twenty-five on it, I'm not opposed to putting twenty-five on it, but if it comes time to purchase bonds. And the interest rate is such that we can go to twenty-two. Fine, I, I'm not opposed to that. I know we have to give MDE something.
Yeah, and this conversation more now is like, what tax number right there, right, from the standpoint, I mean. As we, as we extend term out, right, we get a, we get a drop what they're gonna see from a tax impact when they go vote, right?
Yeah, I'd rather give people a longer term to look at for voting. Purposes, for tax, so that, just so people can get an idea of, this is how much it could cost me. And and if it, like I said, if it comes time to. To buy bonds and and the interest rate is low enough, and we can go to twenty-three or twenty-two, then, great. And if not. I mean, that's, when you go to, when you start thinking about buying a home, you start thi- you start checking out banks. How much is the interest rate? How much home can I afford, you go in, you get pre-qualified, how much home can I buy? And what that number is today, might not be what the number is when you go into the bank to sign the paper. And so that's, I think, that's the way I'm thinking about this.
Yeah, and what I'll say too is, like Jeff said, is we've gotta put estimates that have to get in the review and comment, we also have to. Try to um, be able to meet whatever they assume they were gonna get for a tax increase, right? But as we get to selling bonds, right, then, our role is to try to minimize that cost when we get to that point, right? So, if it makes sense for us to look at issuing based on the anticipated construction schedule. That we do two separate issues to try to not pay interest for the full time of the construction phase, right? That's a way we can drop costs, if it makes sense for us to be a market, cause rates are really low and we issue all of it, we, we would do that, so. I think right now, like this is, is similar to what you're dealing with the construction, is we're putting assumptions together, right? That we're comfortable with, that we'll be able to meet when um, voters would get their tax statements, when the final numbers would come out. But the execution of it is gonna, is, we're gonna, we're gonna look at that. And it's gonna really be dictated what we're seeing at the market at the time.
So, we can always drop the bond down if that's the better of your sales, does it ever go longer? Do you ever come back and say?
It's, it's not common, right, cause we're trying to be able to create some cushion in there, but it's, it's. It's not out of the question wherever, like all of a sudden rates go way up, and we have to add like a half a year onto it, right, to meet the tax impact, right? I'm like, I said it's uncommon, but it's not, it's not never, never happened. So.
Just a reminder to Don's point, you. You went in last time with a five percent interest rate projection to the board, right? And so the information shared was based on a five percent interest rate. And in talking with Matthew, if we were to sell bonds, if we had passed a referendum and sold bonds today, it'd been nine percent less than what we projected. Cause we would've been selling about four percent interest rate, right, would've been a huge discount to the voters. But we didn't know that last June, when you put your numbers together, and you're, you know, so. You're, you're loving, you're using Matthew as his best guess with his best crystal ball to try to give you exact projections as you can.
Well, and the market is so volatile right now, you, that you can't. It's hard to know.
I mean, we've got, yeah, a hundred percent, right, especially when we were last summer. I think we've got some trends right now, where, I mean, the feds assuming they're gonna make a rate cut this next month. In December here, right, so, and we're trending downwards, we've reduced our assumption here as we move forward, um. And that's reflected in these numbers right now, so we're trying to put our best guess together of where we think rates are. With also making sure that the numbers that we put out here are the numbers that property owners will see when they. When the bonds would be sold.
Sure. See, I'm assuming that these numbers are pretty conservative.
Yeah, I mean, we've got.
You can't get willy-nilly with them, because.
Yep, and we, we've got probably a half percent cushion in there right now, from where market is.
How does um, can you explain just for transparency how Aylers gets compensated throughout the process?
Yeah, so we're a financial advisor, we're independent, right, we have fiduciary duty to the school district. But like any service provider, right, our compensation is when we actually execute the transaction with the bond sale. Um, so we're paid as part of the cost of issuance, just like the rating agency will be, and just like the bond attorney will be. But we're not actually compensated until the, that actual bonds are sold.
That I understand.
Yeah.
So, but then that the, you're front-loaded, you're, you're, you're.
Yeah, our fee comes out of the bond issue when the bonds are sold. And it's, depends on the bond size, so like at a fifty-million-dollar level, we'd be probably at like a point three percent of the overall. Bond, right, so it's a really small percentage of the, the actual issue. And it's built into our assumptions, right, so like when we build our assumptions in right now of that overall bond amount. All the fees associated with issuing the debt are accounted for as that, so that you make sure you have enough money to pay for the project.
And these numbers include our payment we're gonna have to make because we're not on a November election.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
You can see the difference between project cost and ballot amount. And that, that, that's the one point four million dollars, or whatever it is, to make that first debt payment, right? So the number looks bigger to the pa- taxpayers, even though it really, it's, it's. It's a false added of one point four million, it's not going towards the project, it's just covering your first tax.
As, as an example, Hoochik County borrowed twenty-five million dollars for their jail. They went out twice, first time they went out, they did fifteen million dollars, which basically covered construction for the first two years. And then they went out for ten pu- or for ten million dollars, actually against the advice of their financial advisor, because they thought rates would go down. But rates went up, so the first issuance was twenty-two years, at at, or twenty-two years, and it was fifteen million dollars. They got a rate that was much better than what they thought they were gonna get originally, or what was planned. But the second time they went out, which was about a year and a half later. The rates had gone up, and they've ended up paying almost a full percentage higher for, for that last ten million dollars, and again. At that point, they were at, kind of at the bottom of the inflection point, the, wasn't Aylers, it was Barron's, but being similar companies in terms of service. But their best guess was, their best estimate was, this is the time to go now, finance it all. But they chose because they didn't like the upfront fees, and again, because of the timing of the project, they didn't like the upfront fees. So there's, there's things that the board can do in terms of flexibility. But really guidance from your financial people, cause that's their job, they're the experts, that's what you should be following. So, and when people quiz you on why you're doing this, or why you did it that way. Typically, it's because you're following the advice of the professionals you hired that do that on an everyday basis.
And. This appears simple, right, from a standpoint of, at, at some level of you take out a mortgage and you pay a rate, right? Municipal securities are not simple, right, I have a license, I'm regulated by the SEC, right, I'm a fiduciary of the school district. Um, and I have to prove that I'm acting in your best interests, right, that's regulated, right? From the decisions that we make, from the standpoint of the, the recommendations we make to you guys, from the standpoint of terms. Financings, what avenue we go to make the recommendations. And beyond that, there's other constructs of. What, how much interest earnings could we potentially have, what are the arbitrage considerations with the IRS that you could consider, right? So, all of those things, when we get to the point, if there's a successful referendum. We're providing information on what we think the best strategy to move forward from the issuance perspective is, so. Um, that's really what our role is here, and um. There's a lot of things behind the scenes that happen, um, but. Right now, this is where we think from the standpoint of our comfort level of the estimates that we could put forward at this level makes sense. And really, if cost is a consideration, right, that, that could. Have people maybe change their vote, or vote um, for the plan. A twenty-five-year term is a term that makes a lot of sense from the standpoint of the asset's gonna have a long useful life. Your tax base and your property owners are gonna switch, and and unlike if you're doing a remodel, right, or you're doing other things. That you'd be doing with the existing elementary, that term should be much shorter, right? Cause your needs are gonna continue to be there, even though if we maintain that HVAC system. You're gonna have needs again, right, it's gonna break down again, and we have to have the capacity to be able to do that, and we don't wanna be paying on debt. When the assets then are being replaced later.
Anthony, are you here, when you're selling bonds, is it adjustable rate, like the mortgage, that can go up every year? Along with treasury bonds, or are they fixed rates?
They're fixed, the interest rate's fixed at the time of sale, and it's um. In most cases, we're gonna take competitive bids, um, and we'll get the lowest, we'll. We'll competitively bid them, just like you'd go out and take sealed bids for a construction contract at times, we're gonna do the same thing with the bonds, is they'll be marketed to the. Um, um, national firms, actually, right? And then we'll get the lowest rate that was offered in the market that day. Um, and that um, typically is the best way to make sure that you get the lowest interest rate. Um, and for most school deals, um, that they'll have a state credit enhancement backing behind them, and. They're um, gonna have a pretty uniform term, the payment structure looks like this, the school districts are fairly financially. Um, healthy, right, that's the best way to get the lowest rate. But to answer your direct question, the rate's gonna be fixed at the time of sale, and then that's the rate you would pay. And typically, they come, right now, the market dictates, um, if you're on a, right now, an eight-year call, right? And what that means is that's the time that you can refinance it, right, so that, right now, is what the market, without paying a penalty, is really dictating. Is that you have an eight-year call redemption, and at that point in time, then you can refinance and try to lower that rate. And for the most part, right, if you think of it, you take out a twenty-year term, the long end of the yield curve is where the higher rates are in a typical environment. If you get eight years out, you're now, you're gonna be at a twelve-year term, right, and twelve-year bond, that's gonna come with lower rates, right? So, for the most part, when districts have outstanding commitments, right? Um, those commitments you're com- you're committing to at the time, but most of the time, marketicians will dictate that you're gonna be able to lower that cost over the. Term of the bonds, because you'll be able to refinance it at some point in time and lower that rate. And certainly, right now, we're in that point in time where bonds are sold, right now, with rates that likely will be able to refinance at some point in time. In the future, if you look at the long trend over the long period of time of where rates will be.
So, we have a deadline of the sixteenth of December, right, if we wanted to make that April election?
Yeah, we, we decide on December sixteenth, basically what, if we go out and get it up in April. What plan we'd wanna submit to MDE, and then we would, we would have to submit the review and comment. Uh, an updated review and comment plan to MDE to get our plan approved, and then once it's approved, we can move forward.
So what do you need from us, Dan?
So I'll need, well, we need to know. I guess tonight, and we need to know on uh, the board need to decide between now and, and we'll make official move, a motion on. Uh, the next board meeting, what plan do we wanna go for, is it pre-K? You know, in the pre-K six, pre-K five, we're gonna do the pre, pre-K six school with transportation center. We going to, you know, we never did really talk about the added gym. Um, we figured about two point five, about two point five million if we wanted to add. If, when Jeff was showing the slides, we had the one in a different color gym space, we wanted to add a gym space to keep some type of a. Uh, community use area, uh, that's about two point five million dollars, do we want that? Uh, something there, and want that alternative gym included. Uh, one of the drawings, we extended the entrance out to catch the inside corner of that. Um, right there, to kinda make it a secure entry, which is all. Um, you know, that would be in, in this drawing. Um, do we wanna include the alternative gym as a, as a que- part of the original question, or a second question? Um, we wanna leave the bus garage on, like we doubt, is that, or is that a separate question, or do we? You know, I, I think those are types of things, the guy and Sam will need, uh, we need to decide that by the six, the next, at the next board meeting. So we can get to work and and get the review and comments submitted, so. Um, right now. So this one's showing, but we're gonna have two gyms, if the, if we go with the, the version of, where the gym's in the commons area, the corridor there. I mean, the lunchroom's in the corridor there, and we have two full gyms. Is that, is necessary to have the alternative gym uh, for the day, if, if we do the. Ca- a cafeteria in one of the gyms, and we have the alternative gym, that answers Don's question, I think that you brought up on bad weather days or whatever. Would that gym be available for kids if it's cold out?
Does the pre-K with six have the common area cafeteria, or did it have the gym cafeteria, this price tag?
We have the commons area, yeah.
Okay.
Good question. Yep, right there, we included the commons area.
Okay.
And you'll, and you'll notice that Matthew's numbers were using a fifty-million-dollar school and a three-point-five-million-dollar bus garage. School's a little higher than fifty, and the bus garage is lower than the three-point-five, right? But we had to give them some numbers to run with, right?
Do you guys feel comfortable saying which one you're leaning towards now, just so we have a little bit of an idea before we get to that?
Does this have a secure entrance?
That's not with the bus garage, no.
Just not that extended one?
Yeah, which one?
Wanna go back to the map?
The K.
Entry?
K five.
What is that?
Rectangle is a secure.
Would be the secure entry.
So when we went to the big one, it was turned the other direction, Jen, it was long wing.
Here we, I just had him extended out to show that we would have access into the building.
Into the alternative gym.
Go to the gym without having to get in the rest of the school. If there was something going on in the gym, in the regular gyms, we'd have access there.
Without having to enter the school.
Without having to enter the school, and then we're still catching in. That could all shift a little bit to make it look better, but when I was talking. Uh, with Dan Miller, it's, we drew it in there just to show up the plan or the thought is. That would be your secure entry, and it'll allow us in the alternative gym, it'll allow us into the other gyms, it would also allow us into the admin, which would then pursue on.
That fifty-three million doesn't include that alternate gym.
Does not.
Yeah. Now, the blue gym is not included in our budgets, right?
Fifty-one does not include the bus garage and the fifty-three does not include the bus garage.
That's right.
That's correct.
Bus garage is a separate, a separate number.
So. So the fifty-one?
Plus three for a bus garage.
Plus three for the one, okay.
Yeah, so we have fifty-four.
If you stick with sixth grade, if you cut with sixth grade, you'd be looking at this number, right? With the commons. If you added the gym, you'd add two point five million.
And if we add the bus garage?
You're adding another three point one million. Right?
Jeff, will we be able to be comfortable if we share this presentation?
Absolutely, absolutely, you guys. We'll make sure you have this, right? So you guys can kinda get maybe back to Dan a little bit with what we were thinking, but. You know. If you wanna do a thumbs up, thumbs down exercise right now, give this a little sort of guidance.
Yep, let's do it. Somebody watch Cindy's thumbs.
So it's about sixty million total for everything.
Yeah. And you were, you were at seventy million for everything last time.
But we're losing. We're losing space.
Yeah, oh yeah, you're compromising a lot to get this from seventy million to sixty.
This doesn't include.
Whole community.
You compromise a lot.
Doesn't include potential, uh, I triple R B funding if that's a.
But also some of that's just in them.
No, we're not.
I, I wouldn't.
The road infrastructure probably took down quite a bit of that money, right? I mean, I know we're making concessions within our building, but.
A half a million we took out for that, yeah.
Okay, so.
Alright, it's real money.
Want me to go first?
Well, you should, you should probably start with what you wanna vote on, the very first thing should be educational. P K through five, D K through six, because that's, that's separate from everything else.
Yeah.
My vote is, uh, pre K through sixth grade. Plus the transportation, plus the gym.
Separate ballot questions or keep it all together?
I would prefer one question. Twenty-five years.
Are you including the, the cafeteria commons area?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything.
I'm. Basically the same.
So that's a sixty million price tag?
Yep.
Approximately is that what you said?
One question?
Yep, one question.
Cass?
Um, I'm the same, but no blue gym. So this plan, transportation center. One question, no second question for the extra gym. Twenty-five years.
I am. Pre K through six, plus the transportation center. Second question for the added gym.
Yeah, well, twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years.
Okay. So, yeah, it looks like I'm going to be, um, a ditto on Jim. I'm, uh, you know, with the second question on the community center.
It's a gym, not a community center.
Gym, sorry.
Yeah, but.
Cause, cause there's no walking track and there's no community space, right?
Yeah, just, just make sure we're all on the same page on this.
Yep, okay, so, pre K through six. Plus transportation center, twenty-five years. And second ballot question for the. Added gym.
So I am never a fan of the second ballot questions, but I do think the community is a fan of those second ballot questions. So I. Would I, if we had to, I would lose that alternative gym, but I will go with Brian and Jen and be like, I would prefer it in a second question if it's gonna be there. I want the pre K through six with the transportation center at twenty-five years. Second question ballot for the alternative gym.
All came to me now. We're gonna have a, we're gonna have to figure out how to redo it, cause I'm with Cindy and Dawn. With it, with it all and then a, um. With the twenty-five year, so we're kinda three, three and one.
So actually Cassie gets to.
Well. And I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to the gym being the second question, I'm not opposed to that, but.
I'm not really opposed to it, it.
But I just think, keep it simple.
Yeah, I have a hard time with that second question, but we did see good results. Fairly good results with second question, but keeping it simple was my thought, so.
Um, I.
I, I will say one thing too, is just the second question from a legal perspective. Might be something that the bond attorney or the election attorney is gonna wanna see too from a community question. So having that gym pulled out as a second question. Because you're within a hundred and eighty days, right? Eventually in spring is a key factor. And you probably, you might need it, is I guess what I'm saying.
We might need the second question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, maybe that answers it for us.
Oh, way to come in with attorneys.
Cassie didn't have to be the deciding.
I'll decide, I'll tell you what.
So, I guess that's.
Well, we wanna hear from you, Dan.
Yeah. I'm with, um. Pre, I'm, I'm with the plan of pre K six. Like if we ever do move sixth grade to the high school, that's gotta be, I mentioned earlier, academic reasons and, and reasons for beyond this. And then, uh. We go back and forth on the bus garage, we really need a bus garage. But I think we, I think pre K six, bus garage and then a second question. You know, it's, bus garage isn't. I don't know that we gain a whole lot of traction there on anybody or who's on it, it could. But not having that dollar amount here, we might gain, but then we're still saying it was a bus garage, yes.
And we're still asking our employees to work in substandard conditions.
And there's no other way to fund for it, so that's what really wants me to.
Long story short, pre K six with the bus garage and a second question on the gym.
That's how I see, I, I don't want to have the bus garage in there, but there's no other way to really pay for one.
And it's still needed.
It's, it's, it's like, it's terribly, oh, it is the, it is one, I, I mean. If we had to pick our two worst facilities, it's Rippleside and the bus garage, so I mean.
Yeah. I feel like you'll eliminate twenty-six potential holders.
Yeah.
Not going with it and their families in the.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just gonna tell you that, cause they're very important to me, they're.
And our bus drivers, they make the whole place.
So many all vote for it, but the potential of it is, is very, very, very possible. And I shouldn't even put it that way.
You don't wanna pick.
It's important to.
Employee against employee.
I should say it that way.
Whose working conditions are more important and you don't wanna do that, cause they're all important.
My hesitation on bus garage has nothing to do with that, just a dollar amount and.
Yep. Yeah, we don't even have. A pig to put lipstick on the bus garage.
He doesn't even have floors, you know?
That's all I'm saying.
We have to re.
Are you still, are you saying we can still put lipstick on Rippleside?
No, I didn't even say that, I was gonna blow that one up, I'm not gonna.
We're gonna stop.
Alright, cause we're not at that point with this. So we need that, we'll get a, a vote and a motion for that and then what? And that, that just has to be done, so if we do go out in April. That, that we have, we're in the paperwork in progress. And then, um. As much as Jeff would like to be done with me for a couple of days, we are gonna jump in and start. One of the things we heard is what does it cost? And we had some rough numbers on. Doing the basic maintenance, getting the building back. So we can survive there. Um, if we do any of the, work on any of the remodeling. You know, just, uh, the two different remodeling or I guess one different modeling option and or. A new building on site, we're gonna flush some of those things out and have some dollar amounts. Um, we won't have them for December, that's something probably in January.
Yeah.
You know, so we can start having and answering those questions. And something we can take a look at if the board decides that. Doing a new build isn't what we're gonna do, so.
I, I do have a question on whether we spend time on that new building on the same site, because we went over that in depth the first time around. And if we couldn't find any good pros to it, so maybe. I know that the community liked to see that, but we did that once, we went through that, so.
We went through a rough exercise, or we went through an exercise, all it's really take a look at it, updating it and making sure. Um, we did a really overview of it and, and.
So it's like updating the prices?
Be a little more specific on, um, the cost and then, you know, the, where do we go while we're either rebuilding or. Remodeling it with, with our classes, how do we make that work, so? There's costs to that, we didn't really get into, into the financial costs of that or.
Well, and how do, how do we? How do we create a safe drop off and pick off, pickup? And make us, how do we make that building secure? It's more secure than it already is.
And we've looked at two ways, one is buying some homes. Right? Which is not gonna be cheap and then you're taking dollars off the tax rolls, by the way. The other is, you, you, you gotta give up your baseball field and you gotta start coming through the baseball field, but we'll. We'll get into those options and the costs associated.
Cindy has something.
Yeah, Cindy's got something.
Yeah, Cindy, go ahead.
Um, so we know that, we've talked about this before, so we would have levy authority to do indoor air quality.
Yep.
Right? So you'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
Roofs.
Yep.
Um, parking and safe entry.
Yep.
And then additions. And so, um, would you take a look at then like what are existing gym spaces versus the orange gym space here?
Oh yeah, yeah, you're, you're way less. Yeah, we'll have that, yeah, we'd have all that, so you could do side by side comparisons.
That's essentially, yeah, so it's like, I mean, I know we can't do apples to apples, right? Because it's obviously an old to a new, but I mean, I think for comparison purposes, we wanna. I would wanna see like how many classrooms, how many, like, you know, what does that mean for adding on?
Right.
Well, I think, for example. All, a lot of your classrooms, I mean, we can speak to this, they're undersized. You know, so if there's some gut and remodel work to resize and reshape some things and then there'd be some additions to make up some space. That just simply isn't there, you know, so you can compare apples to apples.
Yeah.
But does that include?
Started that process.
Six hundred and fifty-four feet on current classrooms and we're up nine hundred to twelve hundred.
So really it's taking four classrooms to get to three.
Right, you take four classrooms and you turn them into three, you know? There's things like that. We, we actually got a start on that process before and. You know, you as a board looked at it and said, well, you know.
This isn't gonna, this doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense, don't continue it, but we can do our due diligence on that and, and run that to ground and get some.
And make sure that includes the abatement of the asbestos, because I don't think people realize how expensive. That is and they go, just tear it down, okay, well, it's, it's got some stuff that it's not just a regular demolition, is what.
And, and asbestos removal over a hundred thousand is, is leavable, so you can get that taken care of. But replacing, putting new insulation and new flooring in and is not leavable, right? And that comes out of your maintenance budgets, right? So. There's some push and pull on some of the challenges that you have as a district, it's just the way funding works and. We had a, uh, one of your resident citizens talked about if you remodel. What does this chart look like here about educational adequacy if you remodel? Because you can't fully make your site and your existing elementary school all green. You just physically can't.
Well, in the building, physically, even if you start and you take four classrooms and. Turn them into three or turn them, you know, however, the numbers don't work out, you don't have as much space there.
Yeah, and, and we had structural issues when we're tearing walls out that are structural.
Yeah, oh yeah.
If there, does indoor air quality, um, address like mold issues? Other than like, I know it deals with like asbestos, but does it, would it also deal with, with mold issues?
If there were mold areas, uh, uh, remediation of mold would be a level, leavable expenditure and then, uh. We do indoor air quality properly, like we would in the new school, you'd have dehumidification systems that are always drying your school. To help prevent mold, right? That's the whole reason we, we have improved ashtray standards for ventilation for schools, right? Cause.
How about for like septic systems that are backing up?
No, you don't have funding for septic systems backing up and.
That's a huge expense.
And even if we remodeled your school, your septic system runs right now through the middle underground in your entire elementary school. It's already backed up, you've already had problems. Without picking your whole building up and putting all the piping underneath it, I don't know how we fix that. It's really a difficult challenge to fix and your pipes are seven years old, right?
And I don't, and I don't quite frankly understand why it's okay to think that students and staff should be exposed to that.
I think if we just actually showed them the budget numbers on how much we're spending. With those emergency services coming in, that might make them go, oh, we're not just saying this because we want something new.
Yeah.
These emergency services are costing us.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's tough because you guys have sat through meetings after meetings, you're probably tired of the consultants being here. I know you are.
Actually, we really like you guys, we think you're a part of us all.
But we've studied the remodel to death, right? But people don't know that, people don't know the work you've been through. They don't understand all the background and so we're gonna do our best to.
The remodel is an. Efficient use of taxpayer dollars.
No.
No. That's where I felt about it.
The displacement of kids, like what are you gonna do?
They're gonna go online for two years and we know how well that works, but.
Well, not only that, they might go to other districts, how do you get them to come back?
Part of, part of the exercise of us doing that is so you have the answers of the numbers behind it.
Yeah.
Should, you know, cause those questions are gonna come up, they've come up already. Whether they get, and whether we did a good job getting solid answers or not, we're gonna have more, we're gonna do a better job, we're gonna do more of that. This time around, so whether or not we, the board, how, how the board considers the options. We want you to have the information there, so that when somebody says, well, just remodel, well, sure we could, but this is what that would cost. And if we have, and if we're bonding for that dollar, this is what it, you know, this is what it would cost to taxpayer. Based on how the bonds work and our bonding work, so it's just getting more information in your hands, so we get more information out of the community and. Answer more of the questions that some apparently thought we didn't answer the first time around.
Well, and I'll be quite frank and honest. I am all for going for another referendum. And giving the community an opportunity to vote again. But I think we need to make it abundantly clear that if it doesn't pass. I will have no problem. Offering a motion to levy the money to do the remodel. And it will cost them more in the end. And I, you know, and I hate to do that to people. But that's where we're at. And I mean, I just don't think that we have as harsh as that sounds. And it, and it sounds like an ultimatum. It really isn't an ultimatum. It is that we are at that crucial of a point. With the buildings.
I agree with you. And I think it's okay that they know that, because I am with you there, that's. Why I'd like to get this done earlier in spring, so we have the time to work through that levy plan if they do not pass it this next time, because. I'm not going to trust them a third time with where we're sitting, we don't have the funding. And the ability to let these buildings continue where they are, hoping that the next time they'll, we just keep limping along, we're only getting in worse shape. So I'm with you on that too, I, I agree.
Uh, just a, a point of order here. Okay, now for the board members and the superintendent, everybody agreed that it was twenty-five years?
Yes.
Was the length of the plan, is that correct? Anybody different?
No.
Everybody agreed P K through six?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. And then what was brought up by Matt was the fact that we may have a legal obligation to ask a second question. Based on Minnesota statutes in terms of how we went out and the length of time that we're going out the second time. That we need to bring back, is that? Matt, is that your obligation? Is that I C S's? Or is that?
Uh, I can, I can do the homework, I'm gonna change, but we kinda have the framework now, right? I, I think right there, first question isn't markedly different, right? And they're gonna have some requirements because we're gonna be within that R M D window. Right? So, um, one, we're reducing planned costs, right? That there's, having a second question ready from the plan will help solidify that change within that window that you're changing enough in the plan. To be able to present the question back in time, okay? But I can confirm that, we can get kinda drafted what that would look like.
I just think that was, it's important for the board to know, because it narrows down really what your options. Are than in terms of what the questions will contain.
Well, that second question goes from that six million dollar full wellness center to a two and a half million dollar gym, that's a major reduction in. Price there, still giving the community an asset that they can utilize and. Cause the gym space, the walking track was there too, but the gym space was the, for a lot of people, the pickleball, I mean, you can still walk around a gym, we don't necessarily need a separate track. in that alternative gym, so, that's still a walking space, that's still those things, it's just not the six-million-dollar walking space.
Yeah, we just, we have a hard finish of December sixteenth, and legally, we have to ask a second question. The board was split three-three on that, so anyway, and it's just, I just wanna make sure that the board's all on the same page in terms of what decisions they need to consider, and how many answers actually have to come back before the sixteenth, because to submit on the sixteenth, we actually need to know what you want before the sixteenth.
Yeah. I'm okay with that gym being a second question, I don't have a hard time with that.
And that's board decision, if you have the ninth, that's what you guys need to hammer. But we need to get the legal piece of it back, just so that we.
It doesn't matter.
I know, I know, I know what you're saying.
If, if the gym was a second question, and if both of those questions passed, and later, if we had a major sponsor in the community who was willing to fork out, let's say, another million dollars, would we be allowed to accept that and then to enhance and go bigger?
Yeah.
I e. out a walking track in a community space?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Might need to be more a million dollars.
Yeah.
And you never, the interest rates dropped, you might have.
It's gonna be another two million.
We gotta get the, we gotta get the reported.
I think that's the biggest.
So we could go more.
Yes, I think if you have the funds, absolutely.
Yeah.
And more, after their elementary passed, the hospital in more came forward with a wellness center and a five-million-dollar gift, and then the board took some of the dollars from the elementary to help match it, and then also used some lease levy authority to match it, right, and so, that came after the pass, as an example of how.
I think we could offer some, I think we could offer some very beautiful marketing signage on the front of that extra gym.
That's right.
Or whatever business or businesses would love to have their name on the front of it, just say.
Right, I think I C S. The arena, so it's great, I C S arena.
A I C S arena. We should just have their name up there, anyway.
Alright.
I, you know, I just, I wanna say thank you to all of you for the hard work, I know that you have contributed many, many, many hours to, to this project, and, and just like, we were disappointed that the levy didn't pass, I'm sure you were disappointed as well. You've all poured so much time and energy into this, and so, I, I just really wanna say thank you. And so, you know, we'll give it another shot and see what happens, right? And try to stay positive about it.
Alright, do we have a motion adjourned?
So moved. Second?
Second, first by Don, second by Holly, again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.